Good morning. Can I say, well done on getting in this morning. It was somewhat challenging for some of us, wasn't it? Certainly, I was a little nervous at one stage, but welcome. Firstly, please remain standing while we have our morning prayers.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, we bring before you not only the concerns and ambitions of our own county, but we ask you to look mercifully on the world, a world turned apart by hatred and violence. We hold before you in particular the countries of the Middle East, remembering those who suffer, those who perish, and we pray that there may be efforts to bring about peace and reconciliation in the land of our Savior's birth. We ask this in the name of Christ our Lord.
Amen. Amen.
Heavenly Father, as we give thanks for the work of this County Council, so too we remember those who have gone before us, those who have contributed to the mutual flourishing of people in this county. We pray in particular for Eddie Bowden and John Russell, who have faithfully served in this County Council, and we commend them to your keeping as they come to rest in peace. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen. For God, Creator and Rule of all, we ask your blessing on members of this council who have been called to show care, concern and responsibility in the community. We pray that they may have wisdom, patience and the ability to listen to each other and to the needs and desires of those they represent, that through their dedication and hard work, this county may duly prosper and the life of all people be enhanced. We ask this through Christ our Lord.
Amen.
I invite you to join with me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory forever and ever.
Amen. Members, please be seated. Item one, apologies. Chief Executive, are there any apologies?
Good morning, Chairman. Yes, indeed, there are apologies from Councillor Abrams, Councillor Farrell, Councillor Francis, Councillor Jason Jones, Councillor Waring and Councillor Wellman.
Are there any further apologies? Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Jesel. We are aware that there are a number of challenges on the roads. Item two, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare any interest? Before we move to item two, my apologies. In light of Councillor Jill Waring's continual ill health and for the purpose of section five of the Local Government Act 1972, I move that her continued absence from council meetings be authorised for a further six months. Is that agreed? We'll take that as agreed. Item two, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare any interest? No declarations of interest? Item three, confirmation of the minutes of the previous meeting. I move that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 20th of July 2023 be signed as a true record. Is that agreed? Moved. Item four on today's agenda of the Chairman's Correspondence, I have a number of pieces of correspondence. Honorary Alderman Edward Bowden. It is my sad duty to inform members of the recent death of former County Councillor Eddie Bowden. Mr. Bowden represented both the former Cross Heath and Audley and Chesterton Electoral Divisions on the County Council from 1993 to 2009. He served on a number of councils committees, including the Regulatory Committee, Planning Committee, Standards Committee, Corporate Policy and Audit Scrutiny Committee and the Partnership Scrutiny and Performers Panel. Mr. Bowden serves as a chairman sitting in this seat of the County Council between May 2003 and May 2005, and was appointed as an honorary alderman upon his retirement from the council in 2009. I will now open up the floor for anybody who wants to say a few words about Eddie Bowden. Councillor Jesel.
I'm unable to turn my button off. That's the only reason.
Councillor Graham Putton. Councillor Simon Take.
Yes, I think it's really sad news about Eddie Bowden. Obviously, Newcastle County Council for many years, as you pointed out, and also was leader of the Borough Council between 1994 and 2003. But he stretches, as a cat stretch, if you want to call it that, stretches as a councillor, lasted from 1986 to 2003. Then he took a break and came back from 2010 to 14 on the Borough Council. He was also the Borough Mayor, which is, I know he's been chairman here, but also to be Borough Mayor is a massive achievement as well. And he also was made an alderman at the Borough as well, has been a maiden alderman at the County Council. So I think a long achievement and to be leader for that period of time. I know being a leader at the moment, it's a hard slog sometimes, but to take your borough through the change which we went through during that period, I think is a massive achievement. And I know he's really well thought of in his former ward of Audley and where he lived until he passed away recently. I think we had members that are here that are also sit on Newcastle Borough Council will remember at our last council meeting, we had a session where we paid tribute to Eddie. I think the Labour Group there, he was a stalwart of that Labour Group and also well-known throughout the Borough, and I think he'd be sadly missed. And I send my condolences to his family and to his friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Take. Former County Councillor John Russell. I would also wish to inform the council of the death on the 5th of August 2023 of the former County Councillor John Allen Russell. Mr. Russell represented the Stone Rural County Electoral Division from 1994 to 1997. He served on a number of the council's committees, including the Education Committee, Youth and Community Subcommittee, Enterprise and Economic Development Committee, Planning Committee, Development Services Group Committee and the Policy Resources Group Committee. Councillor Ian Parry.
Good morning. Thanks, Chairman. I'd briefly like to rise to pay tribute to John Russell, a man I know for over 30 years. John is a major figure in the village of Barstun. My division is his home. He was prominent in parish politics and as a longstanding member of the Parish Council, as a Stafford Borough Council member and mayor of Stafford Borough. A well-respected man in so many parts of local, of his local community and in Staffordshire. He did serve for a term on the County Council. In fact, he is my predecessor. Forgive me, John, but he had the misfortune of he and I meeting together at a time when I think our electoral fortunes were greater than the Liberal Democrats at that time. But John did a great job as the local member, as the member for Stone Rural, as a Borough Councillor. A fine, upstanding man, well-respected, if at times controversial. And perhaps we lack and miss people who are prepared to be controversial at times. John never, never stopped being that person. My thoughts are also with his wife, who is also serves or served as a local curate in many parishes in the area, and is also a well-respected person in Barstun and the surrounds. So great tribute to, a great man, John Russell. He will be missed in Barstun, I know.
Thank you. I will ask all members and members of the public to stand and observe a one-minute silence in memory of Mr. Bowden and Mr. Russell. Thank you. Staying on the Chairman's announcements, Members' Long Service Award. Mike Worthington, my good friend. Since 1985, the County Council has recognised the service of its members who have completed 12 years through the presentation of a long service award. Councillor Worthington first became a member of the County Council in 2011 and has served on the council since that date. I would therefore like to take this opportunity to present the Councillor Worthington with the award in recognition of the contribution he has made to the work of this council over the past 12 years. Mike, would you like to come forward? Congratulations, Mike. He's a good friend and a warmest congratulations. What a happy job he does as a member of this council. Well done, Mike.
Thank you.
There you go. There's a small gift for you and a certificate as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Well done, Mike. I've said moving this chair backwards and forwards feels like a workout, just in case anybody didn't hear that. My first six months as chairman, please indulge me in this one. I thought the council may wish to know what I've been doing during the first six months as your chairman. In addition to the plethora of events I've been invited to by external organisations, and there are many of them, from Speech Day at Lichfield Cathedral to the Armed Forces Parade in Newcastle under Lyme, my focus, as a number of you will be aware, has been very much unrecognised and invaluable work of the county's many volunteers over the past few months. I've taken the opportunity to visit a number of the county's libraries and have met with many of the voluntary groups which use our libraries as their base. I've been truly amazed by the number of groups using our facilities and the wind-raising work they do. Plans are also well-advanced to introduce unsung heroes, afternoon teas in county buildings. We all know groups, large and small, that do a fabulous job for our community, year after year, with little recognition, and these are the groups I'm looking to invite. For the first afternoon tea, I've asked members representing communities in Cannickchase and Lichfield to come forward with their nominations. And over the next 12 months, I'll be writing to members covering the other six district boroughs to seek their nominations. If you'd like to know more about what I've been up to, then please, please feel free to look at the civic events. Thank you. Item five on today's agenda, consideration of a petition. So we now move on to item five of the agenda, consideration of the petition entitled Staffordshire County Council Decision to Take Away Valuable Sports Pitches and Buildings. Firstly, I would like to invite Kieran Newey as lead petitioner to come forward to the front of the chamber to address the council. Kieran will have five minutes to put forward the petition. I would also remind members that in accordance with paragraph 13.3 of the procedural standing orders, 15 minutes will be allocated for debating the petition. Would you like to come forward? Mr. Newey. There you go. He's coming that way.
Good morning, council members. Kieran Newey from Midland Soccer Academy. The petition we present today is aimed at preventing the loss of the current home and request Staffordshire County Council honour the promises to ensure we are not left homeless. We have objections to phase two and three of proposed buildings for the site. In five weeks, we gain the support of 27,500 signatures, approximate population of Burntwood, as well as numerous local clubs, Staffordshire FA, Sport England and the Football Foundation. We are still awaiting a detailed development programme of why SCC proposed demolition of the community buildings by January 2024 and why it is being treated as urgent. This is not just any community club. Currently, we have 200 playing members from the ages of four to 79, mini-kickers through to 2023 over 65, walking football, National Cup champions. Our ethos is to develop players of any age and ability, not just to play football as a means of improving physical and mental health, for individuals' confidence, social esteem and their personal development. Ability is not a barrier for attendance. These teams will not be absorbed into other clubs in the area who are at capacity. In the past year, we have hosted two pan-disability festivals on behalf of Staffordshire FA with approximately 200 players at each event, a fundraising event for DDF Dance to take dancers to Disneyland Paris, and we also partner with local schools and authorities across two districts, as well as Friends of Parks groups and local businesses. The local plan, Core Policy 10, states that facilitating access to a range of high-quality and well-maintained open spaces, playing pitches and sport and recreation is relevant to meet the needs of the local communities in proximity to other community facilities for education and health. Our current site is next door to the Lake Centre. Our Football Foundation rating of the pitch quality has gone from poor through to good, currently the best available. Lichfield District Council Playing Pitch Strategy identifies the site as a need for investment and improved facilities such as changing rooms, etc. The Core Policy 11 says support will be given to proposals which address deficiencies in junior football pitches. There's not enough capacity for current demand, let alone catering for the future needs with the provisions of girls and disability facilities increasing. Lichfield District Council Strategic Plan 2050 states that we will work collaboratively to enable people to live healthy and active lives. We cannot do this if we continually take away the facilities that enable this. A quote from Jamie Hawkins, who's the assistant manager of Chase Town Football Club, who recently utilised the pitches while their astroturf pitch has been put in place. Locally, these football pitches are by far the best quality. Burntwood is not blessed with many pitches. Removing these would reduce the local safe spaces for young people to play. How are improved healthy living targets going to be achieved if the council is mandated to deliver this, reduce capacity below what's currently needed? Around 38% of adults and 60% of children and young people in the area are not meeting the weekly activity levels recommended. Excuse me. This is not the only site that could house a health centre and independent living accommodation in Burntwood. It is, however, the only available site in Burntwood currently providing multi-pitches and the quality necessary to allow MSA to survive. Policy HSC2 Playing Pitch and Sports Facility Standard says where such facilities are lost, a replacement must be constructed and available for use prior to the loss of the original facility. All things mentioned during numerous conversations with staff CC officers. This hasn't happened despite expensive efforts. In conclusion, this is a facility which has been developed for Burntwood, run by volunteers at no cost to the council. It is now in the way of development decisions which were made in the past. It now provides opportunities for all youngsters irrespective of abilities or level of special needs. The emphasis is on using sport to develop social and life skills for personal and collective development. We don't trial players, they trial us, see if they like the club. Without the pitches, this will cease to exist. Myself and MSA need your support to keep this important community asset going, whether this by revision of the three phases of the proposed build or providing an additional multi-pitch facility in the area that suits the needs of this club and the community it supports. Thank you for listening and welcome any questions.
Councillor Deville, do you want to respond?
Chairman, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Newey, for bringing this petition to Staffordshire County Council this morning. For information to colleagues, Mr. Chairman, I firstly, please, need to address the petition's introductory statement. It states we are deeply concerned about your intention to build on the existing playing field. I think it's essential, colleagues, that you have full understanding of exactly what we do intend to build on that facility. Now, together with partners, we intend to provide a state-of-the-art health, care and nursing complex on this site, which is much needed and been long awaited in the town of Burntwood. It will provide massive benefits to people not just from Burntwood, but from Chase Town and the whole of the surrounding area. Mr. Chairman, the proposed complex will consist of a new, modern general practice and community health facility, replacing what is now very outdated temporary facilities, and will provide a range of health services close to people's homes. This is important. It will save people the need to travel sometimes many, many miles to hospital. So it's a great local facility that we're planning. It will also provide 70 individual homes for older people. That's a fantastic development. As well as the 70 homes, there'll be care and support facilities on site to support those 70 homes. Now, colleagues, what's more important than providing these older people a facility to enable them to maintain their quality of life and importantly, to maintain their independence? I've visited similar facilities, Chairman, across the county, and the benefits, not only to the residents of those homes, but to the community, the benefits are tremendous. They're priceless. It will also provide a nursing home for older people, which will offer much-needed capacity for Burntwood, Lichfield and surrounding area. Now, Mr. Chairman, these are massive benefits that will be enjoyed by everyone in the area. It's a complex that people of Burntwood have been eagerly waiting for, for years and years. We're at a point now where, after all these years of consultation, all these years of planning, all this sheer hard work and determination of local people, we're about, all those efforts are about to bear real fruit with the delivery of these state-of-the-art facilities. Mr. Chairman, the petition statement urges Staffordshire County Council to explore alternative opportunities prior to Midland Soccer Academy leaving this site. I can assure you, colleagues, that many conversations have taken place with county, district and town councillors to provide suitable, satisfactory alternative accommodation. And I can also assure colleagues that local councillors still wish to provide suitable alternatives to enable Midland Soccer Academy to continue the excellent work that you do. Finally, through yourself, Mr. Chairman, if I can indicate to Mr. Newey that for most of my adult life, I've been involved with running local football teams of all ages, of all abilities, and I'm really glad you said that, ability is not a barrier, of all abilities and all levels, and I get it, Mr. Newey. I know what a great job you do and I know the challenges that you face, because I've faced them myself for many, many years. I've also been a cabinet member for sport and leisure at Staffordshire Malins District Council for many, many years. So I also get the importance of development of football, development of sport, the benefits of sport, and particularly the benefits for young people, children, boys and girls. I know only too well the important part that sport plays to our society. And with my colleagues, I really want to continue to help you, help you grow further and help you with the excellent work that you do. Mr. Chairman, we're close to delivering something massive for Burntwood. The facility is good for mothers and babies, it's good for young people, it's good for the health of adults and it's very good for older people. We continue to work with Midland Soccer Academy to support their future ambitions, but we have to take this opportunity to deliver this project, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Councillor Jill Hood. Can I remind councillors that we have something like 10 minutes left of this debate, so to keep their remarks reasonably brief? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I hear what you say, Mr. Deville, and sympathise with everything you say. But I sit in the Steve Bull stand at the Wolves on match day and I look over to the family enclosure. I see all the children who are sitting there, who are desperate to be the Jack Grealish or Pele or even a Wolves player as they get older. It's tragic that we have to sit here and decide with one hand that the needs of elderly people and the health of people is majorly important, but then on the other hand, the needs of our youngsters growing up need these green spaces to be able to run about. Crucial for their mental health, crucial for their physical health, our green spaces are disappearing at an alarming rate. I'm sure that if we said to those people who are going to benefit from the health centre, do you want to take away the facilities from the youngsters? Or there may be a possibility, and of course, that possibility is gone now, the building will go ahead. If there was a possibility in the early days that maybe a different place could have been found to build, it saddens me that that's the debate that we've got here today, and I fully support what the petitioner has said, that it's crucial to our youngsters to be able to go and play football, it's crucial to the girls who are suddenly... to be able to go and play football, it's crucial to the girls who are suddenly so prominent in the football world, and also for those who are disabled. And I just think it's a real shame today that we're here debating what do we support. Thank you, Chairman.
There's no applause. Thank you so much, I appreciate you doing that, but I'd also appreciate if you didn't. Councillor Julia Jesel.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And can I, I will try to avoid repeating what my colleague councillor Deville has said, but I also, with my public health hat on, that's the health part of my title of health and care, reinforce the message of how important sport is to people of all age groups, not only in terms of their physical and mental health, but particularly with children with their social development. And I very much empathise with the people like yourself here and who actually give hours and hours of your time to promote and organise these activities. But local authorities do end up being in very difficult positions. This site has been known for a long, long time that it was due for redevelopment. It was vacated from its original use in 2014 and since then has been used by a number of users on short-term leases or short-term licences. And the current users, Midland Sports, actually are on a forty-eight-hour licence, which means they or the county council can terminate it in forty-eight hours, which is something we would not do. But it sets the scene that they have known for a long time, since they started using this site in November 2019, that it was due for redevelopment. We have made commitments and the NHS has made commitments to provide replacement healthcare facilities, and my colleague has very amply described what those are. We've made that commitment to the local population, which is at the moment about twenty-seven-thousand eight hundred people, and they expect us to deliver, quite rightly so. Local authorities, as I say, have to make very difficult decisions and choices from time to time, and councillor Hood probably fortunately will never be in the position being an independent of being, having tasked with that difficult role to take. We've made a commitment to the people of Burntwood. The current facilities have existed on temporary planning permissions for a number of years and Lichfield District Council have now said that they will not renew it. So there isn't an option. Alternative facilities have to be constructed. This is an ideal site. I know both ourselves as a county council, Lichfield District and Cannock Chase District Council are working tirelessly to find alternative suitable facilities for this organisation to use as football pitches. And surely it's not too much to ask that they work collaboratively with us to achieve that aim. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. According to our standing orders, we do have a fifteen-minute time limit. I'm aware of the emotions on this and I thank the public for coming in and I'm aware that it's important to the people of Burntwood. Based on that, I have decided to, after consultation with the monitoring officer, we have decided to extend that time shortly. I would all, because I don't want to close the end of debate, I think it's important not to do that, to give Mr Newey a fair chance at debate. So based on that, I'm going to allow the debate to go over the fifteen minutes. What I would say to members is, can we keep our remarks short, please? Councillor Loveborough.
Good morning, Chairman. Obviously, as a councillor for Burntwood North, I'm going to have an opinion on this, but I have to side with the likes of councillor Deville on this one because this medical facility which is proposed to build, it's nowhere mentioned in here, but it's interesting because most of the clients will come from my division. Their intention is not only for it to be a replacement for Chase Town, but also for Sauters Meadow, and on that basis, I cannot sit here and go, and I have simply missed Mr Newey's position. I myself played on this football pitch, possibly when most members of this county council, some of them were still here and I was well too young, so I know it very well. But I also know the demands of people in my division. And this is a rare opportunity where myself and the town councillor actually don't disagree because we need to get something like this in. If there were other, and I'm aware that there are attempts to make other facilities available, and I hope that they can, because grassroots football is important, I'm aware of the good that he does, I'm aware that the decision is not going to be popular locally, but I have to make a decision based on the majority of my constituents. The majority of my constituents want a medical centre, they want improved facilities. It's also worth noting this is also one of the mostly affluent areas of Burntwood that this is going to be built on, an area I know very well because my best friend actually lives right next to what this medical centre is going to be. And as for football facilities, Burntwood Leisure Centre has been two minutes ago. If somewhere could be found in this district, in this district or in Lichfield District or even another district, I think that's an option we should go for. But as I said, the planning has already gone through and I'm not going to sit here and be a vanguard of obstruction because that wouldn't be right. I know that councillor for Burntwood South has been working particularly hard to get somewhere and I hope that succeeds. And I wish Mr Newey's work of the very best. Because none of us want to lose facilities like this, but on this occasion, I have to side with the council because the facilities of the medical centres are ones that have been promised by the council since before I was old enough to vote. And I think that it's time to be honoured of those promises and build the centre, which will be as good, if it's as good as Greenwood House, it would be a massive improvement to the lives of people of my constituents. And that's where I'm going to have to go with the council vote. Thank you.
Thank you. One more speaker left. Councillor Marty Wilcox.
Thank you, Chairman. Whilst I completely sympathise with the situation that Mr Newey and MSA find themselves in and appreciate the excellent work that he does with youngsters in our division, we do however have to at the same time support the county council in its decision to bring forward and develop on its land in Cherry Close much-needed health facilities that you've heard from all members this morning is needed for the residents of Burntwood. As you've heard, Mr Chairman, the pitches that MSA occupy were granted on a temporary licence, knowing that sometime in the future, plans would come forward to develop the site. I think it's worth reiterating, Mr Chairman, what the site will actually do. The facility will be able to accommodate a list size of around nineteen thousand patients. That will allow for the relocation of Sauters Meadow practice, as well as space for Chase Town branch of Darwin Medical Practice and extended service space for bony head surgery, and at the same time, still allowing for growth. The site, as you've heard, will also comprise of other health-related facilities. Mr Chairman, we have been working extremely hard behind the scenes with officers and elected members from both Lichfield District Council and Cannock Chase Council, together with Mr Newey, to identify possible alternative facilities that could accommodate Midland Soccer Academy. And whilst two sides have been offered, these unfortunately, for whatever reason, have not been suitable to MSA. We have agreed after dialogue with the contractors doing ground investigation work to allow Midland Soccer Academy to continue using the pitches at Cherry Close until the end of this year. And then we will either facilitate for them to play the remaining of the season at Burntwood Leisure Centre or possibly set a football facility in Lichfield. Mr Chairman, please, being no doubt, or members, I will continue to find alternative solutions. We need to keep the sports and the facilities going in Burntwood. It's important that we look after the youngsters and for those who are later in life wanting to keep fit. So I will do all I can and work with Mr Newey to continue to identify a suitable alternative location. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. We've now gone well over the fifteen minutes, so I'm going to ask councillor Deville if you want to respond to the debate.
Very briefly, thank you again, Mr Newey, for bringing the petition. Thank you for the work that you do. I know the work that you do and I know the value of the work that you do. Just addressing councillor Hood's points, I agree with almost everything you say. I don't agree with your football team at all. I suppose if I told you that I sit every week at the Bet 365 Stadium, that I might gain a bit of sympathy. No. I agree with almost everything you say, Jill. The importance of junior football, the development of junior football, it's not just about children playing football, it's around the growth of that club in a community and how that club fits into the community. And the work that Mr Newell has done clearly fits very, very well into the Chase Town and the Burntwood community. I think Mr Wilcox has nailed it with his offer, with his honest and definite offer of future support. As a sportsman myself, you have my absolute assurance that we're with you. We'll work with you to further develop and help your club. Now, you might shake your head, I've said what I've said. We will be with you, we've offered alternatives in the past, we'll offer you alternatives and work with you in the future. This, however, as Mr Loveborough said, this is an opportunity, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and something that we've got to deliver for the people of Burntwood. But Mrs Hood, you're right, the value of sport in our local communities, it's more important now than it's ever been, and we'll continue to support our great football and other sporting clubs and support the coaches who work week in, week out to deliver the work that they do in our local communities. So we really must push ahead with this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the people of Burntwood, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Deville. I personally thank Mr Newey for coming in today and delivering an excellent plea on behalf of your football club. Can I thank members of the public who have taken the trouble to come to Stafford today on what would have been a very challenging journey it was for the north of us? So I realise how passionate you feel about this. So thank you, Mr Newey, and thank you anyhow.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Item six on today's agenda, Statement to the Leader of the Council. Councillor Alan White, will you move consideration of the statement, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I move consideration of the leader's statement.
Item one on the leading statement, sees Staffordshire means back to business. Councillor David Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. My advice to any young person wanting to go into local politics is you need patience. Patience beyond all else, that your prime project that you see as being the great thing as the star in your division should take place can take a very, very long time to bring to fruition. I talk particularly, Chairman, of something that I've mentioned in this council on many occasions, the development within my division, which at the moment has an esporter, a hotel and various other things, but the one thing that it's been waiting for is the completion of what used to be the council refused dump. For various unexplainable reasons, this has been designated as green belt. How you can define a piece of contaminated land as green belt, I have no idea. But Chairman, big news. As of November, there is a planning application going forward, which is recommended for approval, which could only have happened with the cooperation of this council and Lichfield District Council and the developer. And that's happened, we've had various disasters that have happened on the way, but now we have a planning application which will include thirty EV powerpoints for charging vehicles, the first major one in my division and mostly in South Staffordshire apart from the Jaggers site. What we also will have, Chairman, is a regional headquarters for a major company. Nowhere else in the country are applications coming forward for head offices. And so this is quite unique to my division and that I'm delighted with. But the one thing that comes in advance of that is ten acres of high-tech manufacturing. This is a very special sort of development. It's not a shed, it's not an office, it's a combination of the way that an office and office working comes through to manufacturing at the end. And that, ten acres of that development is going to take place, I'm delighted to say, in my division, and I particularly want to say thank you to this council for the cooperation that we've had in bringing this development forward. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Just want to ask what the updated situation is with regards to the Chappely Valley development because I understand there has been issues with regard to the finishing off of the groundwork and especially with the ongoing closure of Peacock's A Road, which is a connecting route from my division into that part of Newcastle and the Lyman beyond. And obviously the Chappely Valley, in the absence of any short-term forthcoming business units in Biddelf North, then I am aware that that is an employment opportunity in the waiting for people in my division in the greater Biddelf area. So an update on that position and an indication when Peacock's A Road will reopen to traffic will be most welcome received. Thank you.
councillor Martin Whittington.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I would like to speak on this question because it's something that affects all of us and it affects the economy as we go forwards. And that's really about the, and I want to speak about the decision, the brave decision made by our Prime Minister last week, or maybe it was the week before, to cancel the second phase of HS2, as we know, going from Birmingham to Manchester. I mean, I personally feel that HS2 should have started in the north and worked south. It would still be going if it did. But that was just an intrinsic problem that I feel that should, could have been sorted straight away. Staffordshire County Council has always been opposed to the HS2 project. John Francis would tell you as an example, one of the six biggest engineering projects in the country was due to take place at Great Haywood, where the HS2 line would go over the river, over the canal, over the West Coast Main Line, over the electrics, and places in Great Haywood would never have seen the sun again if it went ahead. All the people in the north of the county are going to be affected, Whitmore and such like. It's just sad for the people who've had the houses taken off them and the land taken off them and now it's just going to go on to open market, I understand, so I do feel for them. As a county council, we opposed it, but we could see the writing on the wall, we could see that once royal assent was given, we couldn't stop it. So our policy was we were opposing it, but if it went ahead, which it did, we would get maximum economic benefit from it. The reason for that is that classic compatible trains would come off at Handsacre and go through Stafford and on to the West Coast Main Line. This would mean that we've got a lot of benefit, but now we've got sort of maximum benefit because there's no choice, it's got to go on to the West Coast Main Line, it's got to go through Stafford and the stations thereafter. So what I'm asking really is that this council looks to the economic benefit, the housing benefits, the benefits to residents that can be harvested now that all this money has been saved. We want a piece of that, we want some of that money. Locally, we need it for Stafford Gateway, we need it for shops and businesses, we need it for rugby grounds at Docksey. That's just affecting my division and I know all the councillors will have exactly the same sort of asks of this. Staffordshire is the connected county, it always has been. We do need to make sure that we push for that. It's a much more sensible place to have a multimodal hub in the middle of the country, not just going north-south, but going east-west as well. And I do take note of the answers that have been given in question three, which is a starter for ten, but we want more. We want Staffordshire to be thriving, a place that people want to travel to and travel from. This brave decision, as I said, by the county council, and will be welcomed by other councillors such as John Francis and the Lichfield people. Let's go forward with this and do what we can because it's a sad day when we've had big projects council, but there is money there and we should be using it. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Soria de Sain. Councillor Sori Dusay.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. First of all, I would like to be, I'm very grateful to my friend, Mr councillor David Smith, for refreshing his advice. Patience is about virtue indeed. We've been waiting for 13 years, five months and six days. We'll see. Mr Chairman, another sad episode like BHs, Thomas Cook and now Wilcos. I'm referring page 24, paragraph two. Mr Chairman, can I ask the cabinet member, can he assure us every effort will be made to ensure that workers receives their rightful pension, redundancy pay and reliable safety net so that they shouldn't be end up with falling in absolute poverty? Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Councillor Richard Cox.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to stand in a sense what councillor Whittington has just referred to, and I think he's absolutely right that we do need to move forward, we need to be bidding for some of this money to, in terms of the economy of Staffordshire, and I fully support that. As a Lichfield member, I'm going to say, I'm going to be a little bit parochial maybe because the very reason that Phase One is still carving its way through from south to north of the district, stopping at the village I actually live in, with Handsacre. So we're abundantly clear of the decision made, and certainly north of us, we enjoy the plaudits in saying thank you to the Prime Minister for cancelling Phase Two A, but we mustn't forget Phase One, because that continues in its entirety. And that means that we're going to get the pain, the continued pain, the continued destruction, and therefore, what I would say is you then get no gain. So I would urge the county council to consider some of those schemes that were possibly there to improve and enhance the communities that were affected by it, that now are in jeopardy of losing something that they were going to get. And I think it's important that that's recognised quite clearly as part of bid going forward to get some of this so-called 36 billion saved. Because it, you know, if there was a station, then maybe Lichfield is the end of the line, maybe that's where it should be. But that's for another debate and another day. But I would urge obviously the county council to look at it, that part of the district, certainly Lichfield district from the south, councillor Smith's area and through councillor Eglund's area and mine, we're blighted by, and councillor White, the leader, my apologies, but it is important that we are looking at that because we are still affected by it and we're still going to be blighted. So I don't want to hear the no, the pain and no gain, I want to see the pain and the gain and the gain. That is my plea. Thank you.
Councillor Gillian Pardey.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I can't let the very first comment that was made go unchallenged, the advice to young people that if you're going into politics, you need to be patient. No, my advice would be the exact opposite, because it has been proven by this government again and again, where there is the political will, things can happen overnight. Clamping down on the right to protest, the right to strike, where there is the political will, it is amazing how things can quickly happen. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mrs Pardey. Councillor Jill Hood.
Thank you, Chairman. I sort of get the feeling that I'm in a parallel universe at the moment. The crowing about the government cancelling HS2, I've been working since 2015 with a group in my division stone to stop HS2. And I remember absolutely that this county council signed a non-disclosure order giving HS2 the absolute freedom to do whatever they wanted in my division. And we have fought it and fought it, and I felt that the leader's statement to the press...
Sorry, Mrs Hood. I don't really like the shouting out. If you've got something to say, then please press the button and say it. But shouting doesn't really help, but just construct your arguments against whatever Mrs Hood is saying. Carry on.
I felt that the leader's statement to the press was disingenuous. So I would like to see the county council supporting me in my division to actually get rid of the six-mile vast void that HS2 have decimated. Probably none of you even know where it is or have seen it, but we were going to be the base of a railhead, where the ridiculous notion that HS2 high-speed trains would come belting along at 200 miles an hour, oops, what about the freight trains? And it really, really would have decimated stone and the surrounding areas we knew all about, what was going to happen, how many heavy goods lorries were coming on to the rails. So I'm sorry if I'm being controversial. In reply to councillor Smith's comment about young people coming into council, the other day I had a very, very enthusiastic young man who is a Stafford Borough councillor, and he told me that he was going to stand for the county council and asked me, what's it like? I told him all the pitfalls, I told him all the advantages, and when I got to, and all of the meetings are during the day, that was it. And this is a young man in his twenties, very enthusiastic. Immediately, that called his interest. So we really have to have a think about young people coming into politics and how we can accommodate them. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Hood. I'm not sure that this debate, I'm aware of, thank you councillor Eglund, I'm not sure that this debate has drifted quite strongly onto HS2, and I am concerned that it has. And certainly, I think councillor Smith's original comments were a little bit tongue-in-cheek, am I right in saying that, councillor? So I think they were a little bit tongue-in-cheek, but we have sort of moved this debate. I'd ask you to read the papers, it means Staffordshire means back to business, it's not necessarily, it's not about HS2. So I would ask councillors, just be, we are debating what's on these papers, so I'm just going to remind councillors of that. Councillor Julia Jesel.
Very much, Chairman. And yes, I'm very much going to keep to the item on the papers, and that is the A38. I have for many years championed investment in this vital artery that runs through the east part of, and through the part of Staffordshire into Derbyshire. It's a major trunk road. We have had some significant investment over the last few months in road surface, new lighting and crash barriers, but I'm absolutely delighted now that we've got the final go-ahead to provide the additional funding for the full upgrade of the A38 interchange at Branston. As we all know, Branston is an area of major development activity, both in terms of housing, lands south of Branston and Branston locks totals over 3,000 homes plus economic regeneration and commercial developments. Those were at dire risk of coming to a halt because there was a financial gap in between the costs of the interchange and the developers' contributions. And can I thank personally both councillor Whites, but councillor Philip White and his officers for the amount of work that they have put in to ensuring that we have a successful bid and we now have the funding for that full upgrade. It's going to make a huge difference to people travelling in and out of Burton, it will make a huge difference for those in Branston and the surrounding villages to aid their access and exit from the A38. Levelling up fund doesn't actually mean a lot to members of the public, they tend to think it's one of those political terms that so what? But actually, this is what levelling up means. This means that central government are investing in this part of the country so that we can continue to provide the new homes that people need, the new businesses, the new jobs that people need. And so I very much welcome this and thank, as I say, councillor White and his officers for an awful lot of hard work that's gone into this. Thank you.
I have one more speaker before I bring the cabinet member in. Councillor Philip Hudson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm absolutely delighted last week to hear the recent decision about the A50 in Utoxeter, that we are now going to be able to develop the A50 junctions in Utoxeter, which will not only be fantastic for our residents, it will be brilliant for our businesses and it will open up employment opportunities. So we've been patient, and now we've got the go-ahead now to plan these important junctions, and I welcome that decision, and I'm sure that councillor Atkins, who's Utoxeter Rural, will agree with what I've said. Thank you.
Councillor Philip White.
Thank you very much, Chairman. So I understand why the discussion's gone in some of the areas that it has today, but I'll limit myself to commenting on the economic impacts of recent events, which do relate to some of the points on the agenda regarding investment infrastructure in particular. So this council has consistently opposed HS2, but we have consistently also maintained that we will stand up for the rights of our residents and extract every ounce of economic benefit for our county from HS2. That remains the case. The Enabling Act to allow the construction of the first section of HS2 remains in place. There are various, there are various funds that appertain to that, and we will be lobbying government to make sure that they are clear that we expect those to continue and the projects that are attached to them to continue, whilst we discuss with them the broader economic gain that can be brought to Staffordshire through the funding that has been liberated by their decision. An example of which, although we await the full details, is the announcement of investment in the A50, also investment improvements on the A5, and very welcome announcements regarding rail infrastructure, such as the reopening to passenger traffic of the Burton to Leicester line, to name but a few. But we'll have ample opportunity to debate that in detail in this chamber in the future, but our position remains unchanged. Regarding the specific question about Chatterley Valley, yes, it is disappointing that Harworth's, the contractor for the site, have lost one of their subcontractors, Buckingham's, who've gone into administration whilst they were in the middle of constructing the access to the site. We are working very closely with Harworth's as they secure a new contractor, it's specialised work, there's a legal process that has to be gone through to procure that contractor, but we're very hopeful that they will be on-site and completing those works within the next few months, and the sooner the better it needs to be done. We don't want to see the road to the site closed for a day longer than it needs to be. Regarding Wilkinson, Wilcos and Amazon, the sad news about the relocation of Amazon and the administration of Wilco is balanced by the good news that Staffordshire has one of the lowest unemployment rates, both in the region and also way below the national average for England. We have 1.6 jobs for every person who's seeking a job in the county, and a large proportion of those are in retail. So as with, and indeed in logistics, forgive me, with the Amazon site. So as soon as those announcements were made, we followed our tried and tested process, which is we've put together a multi-agency group to work on each of those projects with all of the public bodies that you would expect, and working with those employers as well. And so those employees are having every bit of effort from this council and others to support them. One thing I'll highlight, and it's in the agenda item, is the Jobs and Careers Service, which is a service that we set up not too long ago, but which has gathered pace very quickly because of demand from people and employers. I mentioned that there are 1.6 vacancies for every person who's looking for a job, but we need to match those people up, and what that service does is work with those employers and people to match them with the skills they need. So any of those people who've been affected by Amazon and Wilco who require some retraining to access a different job, we have that service here in the county council as well. Regarding pensions, that's outside of our purview, I'm afraid, but I'm sure that matter will be being attended to. And then finally, just celebrating the good news that is in this item, particularly that investment in the A38 at Branston Interchange, much needed as a Burtonian myself, I'll be really pleased when you can get on and off that junction more safely and easily when that work is done. And I'll just highlight the final item on here, which is the Enjoy Staffordshire Tourism Awards. We have a massive tourism sector in this county, 33,000 people employed in it, a lot of businesses, and the Tourism Awards are a great opportunity for any of you to highlight a tourism enterprise in your division. And I'd encourage you to have a think about whether there is any organisation that you might want to nominate or encourage to put themselves forward as a nominee for this award. It goes forward into the National Awards, the Visit England Awards, and it's a great opportunity to highlight all of the brilliant attractions and tourist providers in our county. Thank you.
Councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. It's very tempting, isn't it, to play HS2 top trumps? I've suffered more than they have. We didn't get to speak from councillor Eglund, whose division's been profoundly affected and has a great big cement factory coming to it, which arguably has had a huge impact on her. But it's not to HS2 I want to talk about specifically, Mr Chairman, with your guidance. It is to national infrastructure. Staffordshire has borne far more than its fair share of national infrastructure over the past 20 years than any other county I can think of off the top of my head. We had the West Coast Main Line fore-tracking project, which went through councillor Cox's division, HS2, the M6 toll, M6 widening. And I think, last time I checked, about 60% of the minerals that the West Midlands needs comes from Staffordshire. So we carry more than our fair share of the burden of infrastructure for this country. The important thing, and the thing that we need to remember as councillors, is how do we secure the benefit of that? How do we make sure that the inward investment that becomes an opportunity as a result of this improved infrastructure lands in a way that councillor Smith described on the Lichfield South development? That we capitalise upon the fact that, for those people that don't know, Lichfield South is what, half a mile from the M6 toll? You're able to capitalise upon that opportunity. And councillor White and his team work tirelessly to ensure that those opportunities are seized, that the job prospects for people working in this county are improved, and those setbacks that we have from time to time, like Wilcos, like Amazon, don't set us back too far because we use the opportunities that are presented to us through national infrastructure. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to item two of the leader's statements, which is living my best life and strategy for disabled and neurodivergent people in Staffordshire. Councillor Tina Clements.
Thank you, Chair. Nobody's mentioned it yet, so I think it might just be me, but is it warm in here? I feel like I'm back in Egypt at 39 degrees. Anyway, on to this report, I welcome this report. As most people will know, I live with my husband, who was left disabled after an accident in 2010, and I think that most people that live with disabilities, either seen or hidden like arthritis or any of the other hidden diseases, should be involved in this report and having a say on their everyday lives. Just to go from home to a hospital appointment can involve blocked pavements, it can involve buildings that aren't DDA friendly, along with a whole host of other issues. So I welcome this report, I think it's a great opportunity for anybody that's living with any disability to be involved with. Thank you.
Councillor Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. And following on from the previous statement, I too welcome this strategy, but I don't think it really does recognise the daily challenges that disabled people face. And I'm going to be talking not about blocked pavements and a lack of curbs which allow wheelchairs to go down, but the challenge that I want to address is... But the challenge that I want to address is hate crime. Hate crime against disabled people. Because that has soared both nationally and in Staffordshire. My daughter's a wheelchair user and she frequently does face hate crime. And in Staffordshire, we've seen it rise by 23%. And two thirds of those incidents actually involve violence. Yet fewer than 3% of those crimes result in someone being charged. That indicates to me that those crimes aren't taken very seriously. Because if they were, then more people would be charged. You know, we have CCTV all over the place, including in Staffordshire, it's not just in London. So despite the very traumatic impact it has on the person and the fact that it can limit what they decide to do in their lives because of the fear of such crime, it's not properly followed up. Now, the disability charity Leonard Cheshire have been documenting this increase in hate crime and they've called for all police forces to have disability liaison officers to help reduce such hate crime. But in Staffordshire, we don't have one and I don't believe that there are any plans to do so. It's about time we recognised what happens on our streets and on our public transport and that we took those challenges more seriously. Thank you.
Councillor Thomas Luffbury-Rutte.
Thank you Mr Chairman. When it comes to disability, it is something that obviously I myself am autistic. So when it comes to this statement, I don't just read this as a constituent, I read this as myself and ask. Sorry councillor Jessel. Yeah, I myself am autistic, so when I view this strategy, I agree. I think it's impracticalities that we struggle with. For example, I have a constituent at the moment, who I'm meeting tomorrow, who's under the council's care, who refuses to pay his council's contributions because he believes, because he's wrongly being advised that he doesn't have to. And there was no legislation where we can come to an accommodation. This is the sort of area where we need issues because this is a young individual. I'm aware that the leader is aware, but if the cabinet member wishes to speak, I'm quite willing to, because there seems to be no resolution. Because, and this is where, when we talk about giving people an active personal life, this is a practical example, this young man wants to go out, he has to understand the contributions he has to make, but he doesn't. And it's quite often the people who autism like myself, many of my friends, don't understand. I find some aspects, the previous comments are a bit contestable because I myself know from experience that Staffordshire has one of the best SEN places in the country, because I myself went through it. I have my friends going through it. I know that this council's autism strategy is good and I'm aware that this government gets a lot of flak on disability. And especially now, we need to make sure that we are giving these people the right to have free and fair lives. I know for myself that this council, for example, would do whatever it takes to provide people like myself, so leading by example. But I hope that we see that taken on by other employers and that we can encourage them. But at the end of the day, this is a strategy that we need to... I look forward to seeing the actual non-drafted version and commenting on it and seeing it putting its place because it's the sort of thing that I think as a council we have a duty of care to those who are most vulnerable. And if there's ways to help or any advice I can give, I'm welcome to. Thank you.
Councillor Sawyer-Dusain.
Thank you Mr Chairman. Our human family completed when everyone is included, Mr Chairman. When we do with councillor, many, many individual cases, especially with the disabled persons, there are three common things we find out in terms of inclusion when they want to stand on their own feet. First, access to capital, CV writing and thirdly, any relevant work experience. Mr Chairman, I would like to know from the relevant cabinet members what more can be done to address those issues. Thank you.
Councillor Julian Pardaisi.
Yes Chair, just taking up the comment of my colleague behind me saying that the government gets a lot of flak on issues around disability and quite rightly it should do as well. When people with disabilities are constantly being portrayed as the spongers, the ones who are going on the sick when they're not really sick. I'm not at all surprised when the real spongers are the ones hiding their money abroad. Okay, thank you Chair.
Councillor Paul Northcott.
Thank you Mr Chairman. I wasn't going to speak on this item, I was going to leave it to my colleague, but having heard the last comment, I feel that I must comment. Being a disabled user myself, I have worked with my colleague councillor Jessel very hard with officers to look at the minute detail of the strategy as a focus for going forward into the future. We haven't got every base covered, we realise that, but what we have got is the solid foundations of where to go on the journey. And I really do take exception to councillor Pardaisi's comments and bring the government politics into this when we're trying to do the very best for people, particularly the disabled and the neurodivergent people in Staffordshire, the very best service. Thank you Mr Chairman.
Councillor Julia Jessel.
Yep, thank you very much Chairman. Yes, I think some unfortunate comments have been made and I think it's always difficult when people make generalisations. This local authority now has a culture of working with people, users of our services, to help shape the service through strategies, to help shape the service specifications. It's got the label of co-production. But what that is about is making sure that the people who use those services, as I say, shape them. So we no longer do a service specification and go out to consult, we work with people as stage one. And this strategy will now lead to the development of an action plan, which will be available at the end of the year. And again, users, carers will be heavily involved in developing that action plan. Because at the end of the day, strategies are fine, it's the actions that count and make a difference. In terms of councillor Atkins' comments, which are something that none of us would like to hear, I'm sure she will be taking that up with the police and I will take the opportunity of speaking to the Police Fire and Crime Commissioner, Bed Adams, about that because that is about education of the public, but also taking that action where crimes have been committed. There are probably far more people who suffer from disability and neurodivergence within our community. There are within Staffordshire 21,000 people with some form of learning disability. There are 26,000 who have difficulties in carrying out their own personal care and 35,000 over 65 with at least one disability. So it covers a whole cross-section from young to old. And this strategy actually is a whole life one. So I don't know whether either of my colleagues, councillor Price or councillor Sutton, may wish to make comment because I want to stress this is whole life. It doesn't segment people into age groups. And I think that is a really important aspect. When we've worked with people who need these services, they've come up with four clear desires. One is access, which I think has been alluded to by previous speakers. They want access to services and facilities and for those to be as accessible as to anyone else. They want to feel safe, both outside and inside their homes. They want to have a social life, as we all do. And they also want access to education and learning. And what we want to do through this strategy is provide access to the services and support so that these people can live as full and a fuller life as possible and achieve the aims that they want to achieve. And I think that is really important. This strategy, as I say, is being worked up now and there will be an action plan that will be available at December of this year. And that will be overseen by the Disability Partnership Board, but also by the Health and Wellbeing Board that my cabinet colleague councillor Sutton chairs. So I very much recommend this work and I hope and I believe that it will genuinely improve the experiences of these people. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jessel. Moving on to item three of the leading statements, which is supported living future commissioning arrangements update.
Thank you Mr Chairman. I very much support the decision to go for a flexible framework for supported living care services rather than a prime provider arrangement, which would have been driven by a few large companies. So I very much welcome that. But what I'm concerned about is what is the predicted rise in demand for these services over the next five to eight years? Because I certainly see that there is an increasing number of people who are looking for support and need support. How confident is the county council that demand can be met, especially for those people in the high needs area? Because so many of those are already being cared for outside the county boundaries.
Councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you Chairman. Yes, fully support this, fully support what councillor Atkins has said. I'd like to take the commissioning one step further in it to ensure that the facilities which are being provided actually dovetail and fit within the communities without causing undue stress within the communities. I fully support and understand the need to make sure that we have these facilities embedded in the communities and to become part of the community. But there's been examples where stress is being caused in the neighbourhood because the infrastructure and support around where these facilities are, i.e. car parking provision, drop-off points for many buses with care workers and things, all should be put there, put in place at the start and not afterthoughts which take a long time to get through. If we're doing this, let's have some joined up planning in the community and get community involvement because we fully support the need for this flexible approach and having community-based solutions to support our people and our locality. But make sure that within the commissioning scope, we're aware of what's required in the wider, or immediate area to make sure that everything works properly and the neighbourhoods are fully on board and support.
Councillor Sahid Hussain.
Thank you Mr Chairman. Very briefly, best possible quality of care. Can the councillor assure all my elderly residents don't need to worry about middle of the night or any time how they will be able to mend their stairlifts or anything? Can the council assure us that all their equipments will be serviced and if need, any urgent attention will be done without any delay? Or they don't need to pay from their own pocket? Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further speakers. Councillor Jessel, do you want to come in?
Very much Chairman. Again, this process, this recommissioning has been undertaken with input from users of the service right from the onset, which is absolutely right. And as I've explained, that's the way we now work. As we know, these are people who have tenancies, they're tenants of or owners of their own property and supported living is provided separately. And what we've found that over the years, there hasn't been a consistent service specification and that service specification doesn't take into account the users' views. And there's one particular aspect that stuck in my mind. Until I got involved in this work, I hadn't realised, is that people were saying, the carers who come in, please can they be asked to knock my bedroom door when they come in? This is my home. And that actually, I think, says an awful lot about the direction, the good direction that we're going in. So this flexible framework has been set up so that there is a consistent approach and it's about what needs people want have, not just the hours that they need. And also, we've been very careful not to prejudice small and medium-sized providers and favour the big providers, which I think is something we wanted to guard against. So in terms of future provision, yes, the point is quite rightly made that we do need to make sure that there is suitable physical accommodation for these people to rent or to buy as they are able. But I think this flexible framework is the way to go. There is a transition period because there are going to be, we found one or two cases where actually people's services are tied in with their tenancy agreement, which is not right. So we want to make sure that those who are already in receipt of these services, there is a smooth transition period. And we're working closely with all users and their current providers so that there is a full understanding of the process and that we will make any transitions as smooth as possible. Thank you.
We now move on to item four of the leading statements, which is deprivation of liberty safeguards, the contract award. Councillor Sahid Hussain.
Thank you Mr Chairman. We can see here, quote, repeatedly delayed with no implementation date in the foreseeable future. Clearly a frustration in there, Mr Chairman. Can I ask the relevant cabinet member, is there any way to hear from our all eight MPs, what are they doing about this? Thank you.
I have no further speakers. Did you want to come in Julie? I've got you Alan. Did you want to come in councillor Jessel before I bring the leader in? Okay, councillor Alan White.
Thank you Mr Chairman and thank you for your point councillor Hussain. Well made as always. We continually lobby our members of parliament for the move towards liberty protection safeguards. We have known the shortcomings of the deprivation of liberty safeguards arrangements for many, many years as a result of a Court of Appeal ruling. This incurs cost, it doesn't, in many cases, doesn't make sense to have the full deprivation of liberty safeguard assessment to be done. So we continue to press for the change in legislation. From recollection, it is primary legislation, so parliamentary time needs to be made available for it. One might argue there should be parliamentary time available at the moment, but it doesn't seem to be a priority. But we will continue to press because it's in the interests, not just of this authority, but also the people who are affected by deprivation of liberty safeguards provisions at the moment.
Thank you. Moving swiftly on to item five on the leading statement, which is the Staffordshire Bus Strategy. Councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you Chairman. On the face of it, this looks a bit of a grim read in the context that the bid which the Staffordshire County Council put forward has been rejected. However, I have spoken to the officers of the bus strategy team and I've been reassured that they have had very positive feedback from the department and there is a new bid which is being put forward which addresses the concern. So hopefully we'll have a successful outcome from that. One of my, I've got a couple of concerns about bus strategy. One is, is the perceived reluctance of car drivers to trust a bus One is, is the perceived reluctance of car drivers to trust a bus service. And to be honest, if we're getting serious with connectivity and meeting our climate change targets and we're looking at investment post HS2, one of the things which we need to be investing in is reliable local connected bus services, which not only are of the appropriate routes, but have the appropriate timetables, are safe, clean and secure. So we can have the confidence of people to displace themselves from their personal space into using public transport. That will, that's an aim of everybody, but we need that joined up strategy to make sure that happens. The other comments which I want to make as well is part of that strategy to make people confident about using buses is making sure that we've got the appropriate infrastructure for that, making sure that the bus shelters are repaired, making sure that we've got seating facilities adjacent to the bus shelters which are protected, making sure that we've got bus stops in the right place and making sure we've got a system very similar to what's used in the railways where people know where the next, when the next bus is coming. So they've actually got the confidence to know that they're going to be picked up and they're not going to be left behind. So one thing which I would like to see embedded within this strategy which goes forward is a requirement for funding for the infrastructure which supports that and gives the communities the facilities which they want to actually be able to use the bus in a safe environment and manner. Thank you.
Councillor Richard Cox.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm very pleased that this has come forward as part of the council's efforts in terms of the bus strategy. I think it's always to be remind everybody that as a rural county, that we have those communities that haven't got them. But I've always said and previously when we were submitting it, that there must be innovative ways that we can be looking at. And I'd look at, welcome any effort to obviously include some of those communities that did lose bus services. But of course, it is that adage, if you don't use it, you lose it. But communities do have to be aware of that very fact. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor David Smith.
Chairman, I was talking to a lady who was resting on a wall in front of the bus stop. And I took the opportunity to ask her what she thought of the bus service and she said, I can't chat for too long, the bus is due in two minutes. And it was. And so I have to say to this council, not everything regarding our bus services is chaos. We do have some excellent stories. We have a revision to the bus service which goes through one of my main villages. That now is absolutely superb. And so I want to say thank you to the council, not kick it because the bus is now half an hour later. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Derry Cookfield.
Can I just say, Mr Chairman, there's an old saying of mine, is use it or lose it. And that's the big problem because everybody jumps in the cars and the bus goes past you down the road and basically it's empty. And that's the problem that you've got. You've got to encourage people to get into the cars and you've got to get them on the buses. It's no good putting buses on, spending a fortune for a driver and a bus and everything else just to go down the road empty. Right? So you've got to persuade people to leave the cars at home. Now, how you do that is something fantastic really because it's very hard to do, right? Because how do you tell a person, don't use his car? Because if a person's got a car, it's automatically, right? They're going to drive to the places that they want to go. Now, where I live, right in Silverdale, and you take parks like that area, you can get on Elbus and it's full. And do you know why? Because all of the people within that area, because they drive down here, they can't afford a car. And if they could afford a car, they can't afford the fuel to put in it. So we're left in a serious position there, right? It's all right having a strategy and the strategy should be, right? Use it or lose it. And if you don't use it, you'll lose it. It's as easy as that.
And councillor Thomas Lofwey-Rudd.
Is this working, Chair? Yeah.
I believe councillor Rudd, it's because you're so tall and the mic is so far away from you. So if you can sort of just lead me towards your.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bus services, this concerns me because one of the most major routes through my division is the number eight, which of course is reliant on West Midland's funding. So I am concerned that when we talk about funding that this comes to a national issue where we need a more permanent solution, as with many things. Bus services, someone's mentioned they use them, if they turn up, that is. I mean, constantly around this time of year, my emails are filled with constituents going, the 62 or the 60s at risk. But we have to predict, we have to remember that buses are a private entity and they make their own decisions. I hope Staffordshire's bid is successful next time because it needs to be. I know that personally, the bus services can be quite unreliable. I mean, if I took one here, I wouldn't be here. So I'd still be in Richard Cox's division, actually. But yeah, I think that how we look at the bus services needs to be more connective and think about how we build them. I note that the actual district council's plans for their future of the bus station is connected to the train station. That's something, but we've got to just get a settlement on the buses first and it seems to be the most difficult thing because, and that's why it's interesting that, I'm hoping that the funding from HS2, which mentions public transport and extension of the two pound bus fare, I'm hoping that we can get something from there because we are the most, as has been previously mentioned, we're one of the most affected counties by that. Perhaps that is a way where temporarily we can use it because services and public services in my, specifically transport is quite popular, but they stop at eight o'clock, which is completely impractical for my constituents. But until we come to more permanent solution with the bus services, we're not going to get night services. But I think that we should be calling upon government for more permanent and the private industry for more permanent settlements of services that we reuse and not stand here every single year reviewing the rural bus routes or the 62 in my division or area because it's just not acceptable.
Councillor David Williams.
Thank you, Chair. And I have to say, thank you councillor Yates for finally catching up on where this administration's already been doing the bus planning for quite some time, is now putting into an actual transport plan. We're upgrading some of our bus stops, but unfortunately, as everybody is aware, we weren't able to get any money from our B SIP money, that we didn't get anything, but we have signed an enhanced partnership. And as such, the use it or lose it analogy that Derek likes to use is quite true and in the fact that we are still very low on our concessions returning back to pre-COVID levels, which has meant that what we have done as this administration is work with the bus companies to bolster and subsidise those routes that aren't making the money. But that can only last for a certain amount of time. It is something that we're working with the companies on to ensure that they try to encourage people to use buses. But we are a rural county, we are very difficult compared to having a town and therefore those are the issues that we face. However, we are still working on it and positively we are making the difference out there. And as councillor Smith has already said, they're even on time, which is great. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Alan White.
Thank you. Councillor Yates, I agree with your comments about the transport funding, infrastructure funding. Wouldn't it be great if government could trust local authorities and devolve to them the ability to deliver transport, infrastructure and skills in their local area? And I call again alongside all the leaders of Staffordshire and Stoke-on-Trent for devolution of these powers to local authorities to let them get on with it because it's our local people demand it. And the nonsense of these bidding rounds that we have to go through only to be knocked back is infuriating. Councillor Williams talked about the initial bus service improvement plan, he uses the jargon of B SIP, but it's all about improving the buses. We were encouraged to go big. So councillor Williams submits a bid of £115 million, we get not a bean. So the reality of it is, we're submitting these bids because that's what our residents need. Let's have some, let's have some money behind this. Let's let this authority get on with it because we can deliver, the government should have the confidence to allow us to get on with it.
Thank you, councillor White. Moving now on to item six of the leaded statement, which is the integrated performance report for quarter one. I have no speakers. Councillor Parry, do you want to say anything? A leader? Okay, let's move on to item seven, which is the Treasury Management Report for the year ended 31st of March 2023. And I have no speaker, so I'll go through the same pair of questions, Mr. We're all bitterly disappointed, councillor Parry. No, okay, this is marvellous. Moving on to item eight, which is the, of the leaded statement, which is accelerated progress plan enhanced, assess plan to do review pathway, a strategy for special provision and the Staffordshire children and young people's framework. And I have quite a number of speakers on this and I'll start off with councillor Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. This SEND strategy is all about trying to get children with additional needs educated in their local mainstream schools. That would certainly ease the pressure on SEN budgets and SEND transport budgets and potentially also could be very good for SEN pupils. So to ensure that they can integrate with their peers within a mainstream school. But that only works if schools are giving them sufficient support which is sustainable and appropriate. Because increasingly, the experience of parents is that they have to fight all the way to get appropriate support for their children with additional needs. So the major challenge is really winning the confidence of parents. You can put all sorts of plans in place, but if parents aren't convinced that mainstream schools will deliver, it means that they will fight for their EHCP or indeed a place in a special school or a place in a private school. That is the reality. Parents will fight for their kids. So unless they can be assured that that support is there, then that battle will continue. And sadly, we do have schools that actively discourage SEN pupils to join their school community. That's just not acceptable and that is why the county council is right to direct some schools into taking SEN pupils. But the bigger task is not just taking on those schools that refuse to admit SEN pupils or to recognise their needs, but to change the culture within a school that recognises that SEN pupils should be supported and should be part of the mainstream. In Leake, we're lucky, we have Meadow School co-located on the same site as Leake High. And that certainly helps both schools to recognise the role of SEN pupils. But unless we can really see a sea change in the way that we deal with special educational needs and that is recognised by parents, we're going to have this constant battle. And so I certainly support the measures being put forward here about support before the EHCP is drawn up. But unless parents are confident that that will deliver, we will continue to have budgets which are overwhelmed by demand, both in terms of transport and in terms of EHCPs and special schools and placements in private schools. So I certainly support it, but I think we have a long, long way to go convincing parents that this is the right way forward. Thank you.
Councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to certainly endorse everything which councillor Atkins has said. And what I would also like to do is give credit to councillor Wilcox because on the medium term financial plan working group, we actually have, I'd look at this in depth. And again, I would like to thank councillor Price and his team for the attendance and the drilling which we gave them on a couple of sessions, to be honest. And I think that's the conclusion we'd like to come to, you know? We need local provision and schools which are supporting both with infrastructure and the right staff and the right capability so that, you know, local parents and children who've got SEND issues, that's the first point of call. We don't want extended transport routes. And I think that's a direction which collectively we've got a good traction on. The other comment which I would like to make is that where it says pre-statutory support pathway, one of the things which is apparent from the information which has been filed is there was quite a jump in ECHPs over the COVID years, which is carried on. And I think one of the things which strikes me is making sure that we have the support not only of the children who've got a SEND need, but also the parents of those children to give them a network where they can actually have help and have that early intervention, which would also have the opportunity of giving them confidence in the local school provision as opposed to a specific special SEND school provision. And I think it is a case of building that trust at the early stage. And one of the things which does affect parents with a SEND child is the frustration of getting the ECHP done in a timely manner. And what that does, that creates a degree of conflict between the system, between the parent and between the parent's perceived needs of the child. And if we can get that more streamlined, more efficient, and I don't mean that in a critical way, then you're building confidence in the whole system all the way across because it is a partnership between the parent, between the child, between the school and between Staffordshire County Council. And certainly, I think the work which we've done on the MTFS has actually shown and demonstrated that and you've got a collective supported way forward for the policies which you are looking to announce.
Councillor Jonathan Price.
Thank you, Chairman. And I know that both councillors are extremely passionate around SEND, so I do really welcome your comments. This document talks about that early intervention support within that mainstream setting so that we can support schools to support those children that require that particular help. And it's also about the journey and bringing parents on board as well because it's about total co-production and you're absolutely right, parents need to have confidence in the system that we have in place to enable them to want to take their children to a mainstream setting. I went through this myself several years ago. I have a 13 year old SEND child and it was a decision that his mother and I took about whether to put him in a special school or mainstream setting. Did we have confidence in the mainstream school? We visited the school, as I've visited many of our mainstream schools, who have a good SEND cohort already and are fully supporting them. He's now thriving in a mainstream setting and it's the best decision I ever made. I do not suggest that is best for all of our children. Those with more complex needs of course require that more specialist provision and that's what that's in place for. The document as well talks about the support that we will give schools to support those children that require it. Because not every child requires an educational healthcare plan, but actually what they require is that early support in early years and in the primary setting as well. It's absolutely key that we get that right and that we work with parents and that we work with schools. The parent care forum as well is now well established, has a huge cohort of parents which are supporting their SEND children and they can see the work that we're doing. In fact, they held a SEND event at the showground on Friday, which was extremely well attended. We had practitioners from all areas take part and you could see a wealth of parents there that felt confidence in the system that we were bringing forward. And councillor Yates is right, I know, the MTFS working group does an excellent job and I really, really appreciated the feedback and the comments that I had from that as well. The rollout of this particular scheme will start in January 2024, so next year moving forward. And we're also doing a large piece of work of gap analysis to make sure that those special places in special schools are in the right areas in the county to minimise not only travel but disruption and make sure that those children have the right support. And we're also doing a gap analysis around those mainstream learners to make sure that they are capable of going to their nearest schools because that's absolutely the right thing to do for our most vulnerable learners, is to make sure that they are integrated within their community and treated and supported exactly the same as any other mainstream child. Thank you.
Moving on to item nine on the leaded statement, which is the Staffordshire Climate Change Adaptation Strategy. Councillor David Smith.
Chairman, I feel as I get very boring in addressing this council on climate change, but I would emphasise again that we have a fantastic story. but I would emphasise again that we have a fantastic story to tell, but it's hidden within every department within the council. I itemised 15 items to this council last time. All I'm simply asking is that we do an audit across the whole of the county of all of the things which contribute to climate change. If we want to do that and pull it forward to a single policy of how we are delivering our policy on climate change, then we would be seen as a much caring council. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I welcome this report, I welcome the input which it's inferring on the districts and boroughs, because a little bit like the previous subject about buzzes, the districts and boroughs understand their locality, so trust them to get on with things. There are a couple of things which I would like to raise which would augment this, and that is, we have a responsibility as a county council, certainly on the highway side, to ensure that we do our bit to mitigate the effects of climate change as it is appearing at this moment in time within the county. And one of the things which we are getting is we're getting more precipitation, more rain and more severe rain events when it's happened. So we're all getting situations where our gullies and grids are being absolutely overwhelmed with the surface water runoff. And I think it's incumbent on this county to really prioritise those reports which go in to say, this grid's blocked, this gully's blocked, this channel one's clearing out, and be, you know, a little bit more responsive from that, because I think the situation could only get worse. And I'll put a little bit of background on that. I have been called out by a number of residents to address surface water flooding issues which have actually affected their properties, in some cases, actually gone through the front door, straight down the hallway into the kitchen and out to the back door, which, you know, there's no way of saying it's anything other than unsatisfactory occurrence. Never happened before. You introduce the concept of climate change, which nobody wants to listen to because it's an immediate problem now. And what you do notice, what the first thing which they do is they'll take you to the road and they'll show you a grid which is blocked. And I have to admit, in 100% of the cases which have been, which is more than a handful, there's always a grid which is blocked, and that is the reason. It's not the reason, it's a contributing factor to multiple reasons, because all those houses which I've been to have generally been 1920s, 1930s, semi-detached houses, which when they were built, the owner probably wouldn't have a car, they wouldn't have a drop curve, and let's face it, a drop curve, a curve is a four-inch-high dam when you look at it like that. So they wouldn't have a drop curve which is a channel to allow the water towards their property. Generally speaking, the pavement, in all cases, the pavement is higher than their property, so it's leading down. When those properties were built, they would have had a retaining wall and probably a relatively small three foot.
Thank you.
This is very interesting, Mr. Chairman. This is the climate change strategy and not building houses in the 1920s and 30s, and you are granting a great deal of latitude to members all throughout this morning. And actually, the subject is climate change adaptation strategy. I'm just wondering if we could sort of perhaps get back to the topic.
I think.
Absolutely, Chair. You know, I'm glad you're in agreement. I do like to put things in the context, and the context is, it has, the adaptation has to be a partnership between residents who blame the council, the council who should be doing their bit, and it's not just about adapting, it's about actually maintaining, and whether we can make sure as a county, we can include some kind of grant or some kind of guidance to actually put adaption mitigation on the front of their properties which have been re-engineered, which augment the problem which we've got, whereas initially that problem didn't exist before the work was done. So it is two-fold, and it does fit in with the adaptation property, because we've got to help individual residents and we've got to have the capability of doing that, both potentially in grant assistance, both potentially in guidance, but we've got to take the issue of making sure gullies and grids are absolutely clear before we put extra levels on of that adaption. So thank you for your intervention at one level, because it did allow me to be very precise on where I think we can be doing. I've gone, Amber, I'll sit down.
Councillor Soreyde saying.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we work in the woodlands, we can listen the magic whisper from the old trees, from the biodiversity to the enhanced water quality, oh, resist the flood naturally, tree is our best friend. Mr. Chairman, can I expect my friend cabinet member to help us? Will he initiate any coordinated approach with local authorities like town council, parish council, borough councils and whoever, and also mobilise local volunteers to do a proper survey to find out the opportunity, how we can expand our woodlands? Because, Mr. Chairman, it takes time to benefit from, so we have to start soon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Simon Take.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the comments so far, which I'll address in a moment. But I think this strategy before us, as the leader said, is what we're discussing today particularly. And in recent years, Staffordshire has seen an increase in extreme weather events. We've all seen it in the last few days, you know, heavy rain across the county, and there's been 15 significant flood events since 2009, storms since 2018, and we have those record high temperatures, didn't we, last year of 40 degrees? So the strategy before us has been, as councillor Yates mentioned, has been developed as a joint effort between the districts and the boroughs, working together on a joint strategy, which has now been agreed by all of the districts and the county, so we can be all working together on a common gain. And the strategy acknowledges the importance of preparing for the impacts of climate change in the future and emphasises the need for those adoptions and for plans right across the council and every department to ensure that we are mitigating the effects of climate change. And I think the strategy focuses, Mr. Chairman, on four key areas, that's infrastructure and buildings, our natural environment, protecting residents and the local economy. And there are already ongoing initiatives that are taking place, such as drainage systems, floodplain restoration, flood defence upgrades, which are showcasing how we can actually take proactive action to cut down on incidents happening in the future. It all feeds in closely with our local nature recovery strategy, which the county council is the accountable body for taking forward. There are more extreme weather events, as we know, and they're becoming more commonplace, and putting those measures into place are helping to protect our community and going forward. We must have that as a central aim of this, also when we're building roads, when we're improving the economy, helping jobs and skills are all based on the fact that we need to mitigate climate change and its impacts across the board. To comments that have been made, councillor Smith, thank you for those. And the climate change action plan update will be brought to November. This is its third year, and that will detail the actions across this council that are taking place. I don't want to preempt that on the headline figures, but I can say we are doing really well on our target to get to net zero by 2050, as we're only at 2023, but I won't preempt the figure at this stage. But I think in that plan, councillor Smith, you will see all the actions that have been taken and also some of the good news stories that we've achieved over the last year. And I think getting those good news stories out to people to show the actions that we are taking as a council, and also the ones we're taking in partnership with our districts and boroughs through the Staffordshire Sustainability Board is a really important thing, and I take that on board, that we need to shout about it. But we are doing things, there is a plan, and we're working to that, and the entire organisation is working in that direction. Councillor Yates completely understands the issue with flood risks and also the impact from highway issues as well. I would say we have a really good flood risk management team here at the county council, and if you'd like to contact them over a particular issue, I'm sure they will help. And also there are, and you already have done that, and I hope they're working with you. I think on highways issues, obviously those drainage blocks through your local highways offices is to take those up. I know it's always a difficult thing, because there's a lot of, I find that in my division, a lot of issues to resolve, but I think they are there to, as councillor Williams, as the highways portfolio will say, there to help us if we get those on the list to be repaired. So I think there's a lot going on already at the moment on, for example, restoration of floodplains in Stafford, enabling wildlife to thrive to reduce flooding, wasteland enhancements in Burton, and also stuff in Lichfield as well on flood defences. And also, I think it's something which we are going to build on over the next few years through this strategy and really improve. I think what councillor Sane, Mr. Sane mentions about the working together on making sure we plant trees and improve environmental issues across the county, we are working with our districts, and I think there is a role for parishes and also community groups within that, and we want to link into those. And I think it's something we need to develop further. I think I'd like to work with councillor Sane to understand some of the issues he's got over there in Burton, so we can work together to spread that improvement and environmental message particularly to people. There are community groups out there working hard on the environment, we need to help them to achieve for their local communities. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Take. Moving on to item 10 of the leading statements, which is the recommission of the shared lives services. I have no speakers, but we'll move on. Item 11, the Staffordshire warmer homes, approval of the spend plans for the home upgrades in grant phase two. Councillor Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to put an appeal out really for councillors to potentially assist in this project, because it's a very laudable project. It's aimed at houses which do not have a mains gas supply. There is a reasonably tight qualifying criteria, but I think as councillors who are embedded with our local communities, we perhaps know properties and houses and households who wouldn't perhaps ordinarily go out and apply for one of these grants. There is a sort of inertia when it comes to pressing buttons on social media, because they get bombarded with paraphernalia. And I think we've got a special position within the communities where we can actually identify households we know who may well be eligible, and then as a trusted organisation, we can actually encourage them to take benefit of this grant, both from the point of view of our carbon reduction targets, but more importantly, from a point of view of helping them meet the issues with regards to the cost of living crisis. So it's really that appeal to councillors to promote this in their locality where there isn't a gas connection. Thank you.
Councillor Julia Jesel.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, councillor Yates, for that suggestion. I think it's a very helpful and constructive one, and we can all be responsible for identifying people who may benefit from this, but also through our parish councils and our community groups. It is important, and I think what is very good about this particular phase, which is a fourth phase, is that it is targeting those properties predominantly in rural areas who are off the gas grid, because they are particularly vulnerable. They're either relying on electricity, solid fuel or oil. And in terms of climate change, obviously, we want to offer what assistance we can to make their homes warmer and more efficient. I would like just to bring members' attentions very, very briefly. This is the fourth phase. With the previous three phases, these warmer home grants have helped nearly 1,000 homes improve their insulation, improve their heating, photovoltaic cells on solar panels, and it's a total investment from government of £21 million since 2020. So when people say to you, the government don't give us any help, they do, and it's a significant amount. So I very much support what councillor Yates has said. Can we make sure that we get that message out, that these grants are available? Because it's not only in terms of climate change, it's in terms of people's health. Living in a cold, damp property is not good for anybody, young or old, and it is important that we get that message out. So thank you very much, councillor Yates, for that. Thank you, Chair.
Moving on to item 12 of the leading statement, which is Staffordshire Jobs and Career Service.
Thank you, Chair. Over the last couple of years, I've attended a number of these jobs fairs, both in my division and my district ward. Pleased to say that they've been a resounding success. I went to the one in Rugely in March, they had over 200 people attend the event, and myself and councillor Sutherland went to the one in Cannock in June, and it was a considerable amount more people attended. More employers attended the event, and they were given opportunities for retraining, apprenticeships, job opportunities and educational skills to people who want to improve their opportunities of getting better work. So a lot of these events are going to be run through the county over the next 12 months, and I would encourage all members to attend and support these events. And more people in work are better for our local economy and our environment where we live. So thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Philip Woodson.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'll keep it brief, because I'm aware this is double bubble on this one, because it was mentioned in item number one, but you can't get enough of a good thing. The one point I'll just highlight is those jobs fairs. We've had some of them already, so at the Macarthur Glen Retail Outlet in Cannock, there's one at Hanley Job Centre, which we're doing in partnership with Stoke-on-Trent City Council. Today, there is jobs fair at Cannock Civic Centre Ballroom, and later in the month, on the 25th of October, we have a jobs fair at Newcastle Job Centre, and then one at Rugely Community Church and Centre on October the 26th. So we're out there in communities, helping people to engage with this fantastic service. You can also visit staffsjobsandcareers.com if you want to access it digitally, and it really is a great service, a really welcome addition to our careers and employment landscape. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wood. Item 13 on the leading statement, which is fixing more roads. We have a number of speakers on this item. So can I ask members to be as brief as possible? Please, make your point, but as you can imagine, we do have a number of speakers. Councillor Philip Woodson.
Thank you, Chair. As members will know, normally when I'm standing up on this item, I'm usually fighting the corner of Utuxeter to improve my roads. Today, I'm very pleased to come to the chamber to say thank you to the cabinet member for highways. It's like the number nine bush, you have none come for ages and then they all come at once. I hope I'm not tempting fate, but there's been such a significant improvement in what's happening in Utuxeter, and a lot of jobs that were way behind in time have now been completed. Looking to the future, David, to continue the work. It's getting the local parish council off my back now, because instead of being sent a shopping list every week of things that need doing, I'm able to go back to them and say, we've done this, we've done that, we've done the other. I still have a lot of plans in place to do over the next 18 months. Be patient, as David Smith says, and they'll get done. Don't keep telling me what I already know. I'm quite well aware of what's going on in Utuxeter. I do speak to residents, I do walk the town regular, and we will get it done. But thank you, David, and thank you to highways for the improvements that we've had over the last few months.
Councillor Janice Sylvester-Hall.
Thank you very much, Chair. Good afternoon, colleagues. It's interesting when we start seeing these numbers in here, what they actually mean, how we quantify them. And for me, I was reflecting back on some of the minutes, and on the 14th of October in 21, I actually presented a heartfelt petition from the residents of Lichfield City North that was prompted following the fatal accident and the loss of a very young life of a resident within the area around Grange Lane and Eastern Avenue. Building on the work of the local member, councillor Ray, as well as the highways officers, two years to the day, pretty much, I'm able to come back here and say, a couple of weeks ago, those lights were commissioned. The installation of significant civil engineering works and road surface treatment works totaled something like £800,000 in the end, but it was done, much to the gratitude, which is where I'd like to take opportunities to do now, to thank highways, to thank the cabinet member for their response into those. What it means to the local community in there is significant. Thank you very much.
Councillor Jill Hood.
Thank you, Chairman. We in Stone have been waiting for the Walton Island to be maintained, potholes etc., and finally during the. And finally, during the school holidays, it was begun. We hit quite a few snags, there was a main drain that had gone down and the hilarity of the spellings on the signs has kept the local residents all entertained. I would like to congratulate you David Williams for the speed in which it was actually carried out, even though we had monsoons, Covid hit the teams, we had plant machinery not turned up and then as I say, the drains. It was an incredible feat. Those young men and women worked throughout the night and they were extremely polite to our residents. One day, standing with the crew, I watched a very elderly gentleman drive down a one-way Eccushill Road against the flow of traffic. He pulled up in front of myself and three highways engineers and said, could you move those bollards please? I need to go in there and get petrol. It just beggar belief, it was really funny. But it's been a huge success and I genuinely thank you.
Councillor Richard Cox.
Thank you chairman. I'm going to keep it brief. It is a thank you. I think we are seeing the fruits of the additional investment. Certainly potholes, if we were to refer to those, they are being done and I thank you and all the team for the work that's being done. Thank you.
Councillor Bernard Peters.
Thank you mister chairman. The highways capital programme identified a significant junction in my division known as Clay Mills. It's a major gateway to my division and it's a major gateway into Burton-on-Trent. It was identified as a priority and during the past three to four weeks, a comprehensive maintenance and upkeep programme has been undertaken and the whole junction has been resurfaced. And I have to say, the residents are more than satisfied. I'd like to express my thanks to the highways team and councillor Williams for all the good work and he listened, as all conservatives do. We listen and we deliver. So thank you very much indeed.
Councillor Philip Atkins.
Thank you chairman. Yeah, I think we've seen the fruits of our endeavours, but I don't honestly be thinking that we won't stop all the complaints from members of the public because there'll always be some work to be done. But I'd like to say thanks for Elliston Level and the gullies that were ampeded there, which should have been done years ago and we've managed to get that going. To the Beamhurst Roundabout for JCB, which is a vast improvement on a rutted roundabout that's only been 10 years, which leads me on to something that there is still a lot of work to do. And I welcome the announcement that the prime minister made about diverting HS2 money into the A50 and A500. That is the North Midlands manufacturing corridor and it's quite key that we fix the roads and get ready because JCB have plans to double production over the next five years. It's a global company, we are a global nation. And I know, you know, I listened to Jill Hood going on about people can't just get that fixed. We do have that, but we also have a lot of commercial vehicles that are moving big goods around between East Midlands Airport to the factories like JCB or Rolls Royce or Toyota or Bombardier or Bentley and Crewe. And those that say what happens when the road ends to, you know, at the ends of that, there is more roads that need to be done and the government have pledged that funding. And so you'll be from deep seaports from Liverpool to Eamington. So east-west is crucial, but this is also crucial because it's all right having a good main road, you do need to have decent roads to feed on to that so that you can get on to it. So thanks to the highways team.
Councillor Caroline Trobridge.
Thank you mister chairman and good afternoon. Oh, we afternoon. Good afternoon everyone. It's lovely hearing how many wonderful roads have been done and I personally do appreciate the A34 being done. But the Wolverhampton Road has needed doing for as long as the A34. Both of them are major routes into Stafford, one coming from junction 14, one coming from junction 13. So I'm hoping and praying and begging the cabinet member to now look at the A34 and see what improvements can be made there. Thank you.
Councillor Jonathan Price.
Thank you very much. A lot of praise to David today and particularly the highways team and the huge amount of work that I know goes on behind the scenes. I know from personal experience, I'm talking to David, that his inbox when it comes to potholes and roads is full and takes a lot of tackling. Both David and the team have supported councillor Perth and I around the Beacon Side Road and the pressures we're putting on the housing developer to get that particular work carried out, it has been going on for some time and I would just like some reassurances from councillor David Williams that he will continue to support us to put pressure on to get that scheme delivered. On the category three pothole programme or the pothole investment, that has been extremely useful and I have managed to identify a lot of niggly category threes that we wouldn't normally get done, identified and they've been out and done that work. And I have to say that Stafford North, my own particular division, is looking much, much better and I thank you for that as well David. And again, we had a structural failure of the main road, which is the A34 Stone Road and that work has only just been completed in the past couple of weeks. It looks absolutely fantastic and the residents there that have suffered for some time with a particular poor road are over the moon. So again, thank you very much councillor Williams.
Councillor Mike Whittington.
So the short attackings, anyone travelling on the A520 today, in between sort of Chadton and Warington, it's an absolute diabolical, the roads collapsing, these potholes. So mister Hudson, I must be in the wrong, I must be of the wrong division. I think I need to move divisions I think to get this work done. I've got loads of emails which I know have gone direct to David, I know he's obviously under pressure, but I mean, I had 16 residents turn up at the Wettley Rocks Village Hall meeting, asking for making it one way. I said, you must be joking to try and divert traffic up the A522. I said, all my votes will be gone out the window. So please David, can you try and repair the roads on the A520, it'll be much appreciated. Thank you.
Councillor David Smith.
Thank you chairman. I seem to be bobbing up and down quite a lot today. I do apologise. Chairman, I'm concerned that the more roads that we look to repair, the more road closures we're going to have. And I am absolutely appalled and it may well be the utilities that are the people who are the ones failing us, but we have details sent to us as councillors of proposed road closures and what the diversion is going to be. In my division, I have recently had a fairly busy road closure and the diversion has been along a single track, which is grass in the middle, waiting for some major works to be done. And all we ended up with is a traffic jam up a lane that was already impassable. And so I do implore this council and the people concerned to insist that they actually look at the road closure rather than just look on a map and come to a conclusion because the actual feet on the ground is what matters when you're looking at diversions. Thank you chairman.
Councillor Paul Snape.
I think I must have the right division because this year I've had £50 million spent on the gateway project from the M6 junction 10 in the Cannock Town Centre. That really is to supplement the £20 million that's been spent on the levelling up fund in Cannock Town Centre. So the two of those things going together will make Cannock a far more better place for industry, for shopping or for whatever. I'd like to thank my two officers, Mark Keeler and Cheryl, for keeping me informed throughout because then I'd be able to keep the residents informed. Most of the work has taken place at night, as somebody previously said, so it's been led to very, very little disruption and they actually had a halt over the school holidays. So it's went very, very well. I had an email yesterday that work is now finished. So councillor Williams and everybody, the council for authorising all this, I'd like to say thank you very much. You can come to Cannock Town Centre Division anytime you like.
Councillor Anne Edgela.
Thank you very much chairman and good afternoon everyone. Yes, I just want to reflect on what's happened this morning in Stafford. You know, with the amount of traffic coming off the M6 with the closure of the M6 and the amount of traffic and the lorries and the damage that starts doing to our road system in Stafford. And I do believe, David, you know, I don't know whether we should be writing to highways England, I don't think they call it highways England now. I know I've asked for more money to be spent in Stafford because of the problems we have in Stafford when the M6 is closed. And it's the damage that it's doing to our roads and we're suffering for it and we're not getting extra funding for that. So I believe that this council should be writing to highways England and asking for more money.
Councillor Edger.
And I look forward to thanking.
I think this morning was a short term problem with an accident.
Well, it happens a lot though. I'm sorry, but this happens a lot. It's happened in the last couple of months actually twice and it really causes a major problem. And I look forward to standing up in this chamber and thanking David for the work to getting done on Rodford Bank. Thank you.
Councillor Jill Heath.
Thank you chairman. Yes, I'm very pleased that the south of Staffordshire and the centre of Staffordshire's getting such attention and your roads are going to be absolutely marvellous. I look forward to them all being completed and then please, send the teams up to the north of the county because we don't seem to exist up there.
Councillor Mike Whittington.
Mister chairman, just my heart gives a little jump every time I see a road closure because it means something's being done to the infrastructure, whether it's Amy, BT or whoever. And it does appear to be a lot more and I've been to parish councils and they've not mentioned a pothole, which, I mean, there's some ulterior world where people have never mentioned potholes, mention them for years. So thank you David and please pass on the thanks to the team because I know you haven't done it, they've done it and absolutely brilliant, but I want to be more specific. You've all sort of been here and I've moaned about Shea Lane, which is, it's a rural road, but it's an arterial road. It's been closed for well over a year. I've had stick everywhere I go, it's like, what are you doing about Shea Lane? And I said, look, it's going to be done, promise you it'll be done tomorrow. And I know it's Friday the 13th, so fingers crossed, it's going to be reopened. And it's brilliant and it looks, it's fantastic job. It looks like something should be, it's like a HS2 bridge to be honest, for a little culvert, but it's taken a year, but it's been done. And all my thoughts and parish councils where I've said, the county council will do it. It might not be done tomorrow because the locals wanted to just dig a pipe in and it doesn't work like that, but it will be done. And this is, that for me is proof that the county council is a force to be reckoned with and given the money, given the finances, given the ambition, we can do what we've just been talking about. So thank you David and thank you staff.
Thank you councillor Whittington. I think your heart giving a little beat when you get an email about a road closure will stay with me forever. I have two more speakers left before I bring the cabinet member in. Councillor Noddy Yates.
Yes, thank you chairman. I wasn't going to say something, but picking up on the problems which we had.
Members, I would ask that we all give each other respect when somebody's speaking. I'm sure we are only, I'm sure, no, don't tell me to chillate. I'm sure we're all having a laugh, but let's have some decorum. Thank you councillor Yates.
Just picking up on the previous comments related to the issues with the traffic on the M6 and the problems with the HGVs, I'm just putting it to you as a proposal, as perhaps we need a new railway.
The final speaker before I bring in the cabinet member, councillor Janet Eglund.
There you go. Thank you very much indeed. I've just got to, I've listened to all these compliments going around and David, and it must be your day today because I am absolutely delighted to stand here and say to you that after all these years of trying hard to get public transport to the National Memorial Arboretum, this guy has managed to do it together with his team, Daryl Ayers. I want to thank you very, very much. It is absolutely good news on behalf of not only the arboretum and their executive committee, but on the residents that haven't got personal transport to get them there and of course the volunteers that keep the National Memorial Arboretum going. So thank you very much indeed, both to you and to the team. Thank you very much indeed.
Councillor David Williams.
Thank you members for the loving, it's been wonderful. Well, I think I do make the most of it because I'll be in cabinet next week and obviously that's the usual place I get battered. I think it just shows though that the fact that cabinet did vote to do a £15 million extra investment this year and next year, on top of the money that we normally spend, which is well over now £80 million, is making the difference. The swatfall extra part that we had for the potholes and for members' potholes for CAT threes is working. I believe we're now just over halfway out of the 2,000 that are identified, we're over 1,000 of those. And despite demand challenges in high risk emergency defects, which was actually quite a large amount at the start of the season, we've now returned back to benchmark levels of sorting all of those out, well over the 90th percentile of making sure we get all of the CAT ones and CAT twos done within the timeframes. Preventative maintenance is now 90% complete despite the unreasonable weather that we've been having, which means we've got 1.2 million square metres, or that counts to 120 miles, all done with this new preventative treatment extending the life of these roads for 10 to 15 years. And a lot of that, 50,000 of that is now that new micro asphalt that we've trialled and used for the, and we see what people notice the difference. When you look at it, it looks like a brand new road, it lasts a lot longer, it's really good and it is really, really useful. Capital maintenance is also on track and our structural maintenance plans are progressing well with 13 sites now completed and seven sites started in quarter three. That does also include the Luft2. All the Luft2 projects are now on time and are being delivered as they should be. As I say, we're not complacent. Thank you for the positive thoughts and the positive reactions today. Yes, I will make sure that we carry on with the beacon so with the pressure to make sure that the developer does the right things. And I think that's the point. We've always going to have more to do, but we need to get the positive parts in and tell the people that we are doing the things in the right way. We are looking at the fact of where it is strategically and in the way of hierarchy of danger to make sure that we give the right amounts of work, the right amounts of treatment to the types of road that we need to do. And despite certain members who want everything done in their area all at once, we are doing the right things in the right places and it is around. And just for the north, you've had the JCB Pothole Pro working there and I know that councillor Dever has been really happy with that working, going for it. And Wettley Rocks, we are on it and we're looking at it. Thank you chairman.
Councillor Alan Woodson.
Thank you mister chairman. It's good to hear all the local schemes are going so well, but I just want to take a step back from the local schemes and just address a couple of national issues, picking up on what councillor Philip Atkins talked about. It's vital that our roads work well so that our businesses can function and get their goods to market and get their raw materials in. It is also vital, as councillor Anne Edgela pointed out, that when national highways divert into Staffordshire roads, that those roads do get chewed up by those vehicles. Myself and mister Ayers have had conversations face to face with national highways about recompensing this county for the damage done to the roads by the vast number of vehicles that divert through the county. To no avail I'm afraid. They say you're the highways authority, it's your responsibility to fix it, but we will continue to press for compensation for diversions off arterial routes onto highways authority roads for the damage that's been done. And then my final point, just a slightly lighthearted anecdote. For those of you who aren't aware, there's a by-election going on in Tamworth, which will take place a week today. And I was campaigning with the roads minister on Saturday of last week. He said to me, how's it going in Staffordshire? I said, pretty good actually, pretty good. What are your issues? And would you believe it, we walked past a pothole just as he said that to me. I pointed down and said, those are my issues. So what are you going to do to make sure we have sufficient funding to make sure we're filling those things in on behalf of the residents of Staffordshire? And he gave me an undertaking that some of the money that's being in inverted commas saved from HS2 will be diverted to Staffordshire to help continue fix the roads so we can get about more efficiently. Thank you mister chairman.
Moving on to item 14 of the leading statements, celebrating 10 years of diverting waste from landfill.
Thank you chairman. I wasn't going to let this pass lightly actually because it's a small paragraph, but it's a really good example of planning long term for the future. It's probably four or five years when planning went into the waste of resource energy plant down in the south of the county. And it was, at the time that it was passed through this council, it was the biggest project this county council had ever undertaken with over £800 million. If we hadn't done it, we'd have been paying about £100 million plus landfill tax a year. If we hadn't done it, we'd have been paying about £100 million plus landfill tax a year. And the discussions and arguments that were going on around the West Midlands about what we should do, it also takes Walsall, I had to go and see the Walsall leader because he didn't know what to do, North Warwickshire, transfer stations, all sorts of things have gone on into this. And it wasn't that easy in this chamber because it was plonk right in the middle of a Conservative division. And I can remember Veronica Downs giving me some write over, and she was the biggest fan of it in the finish. So the Prime Minister is right, you plan for the long term. And it's a small paragraph, but it ain't enough saving this council some money and also helping towards our energy. One slight proviso that I had, that we tried to move Gestamp there and use the power from the station to better effect. And we managed to get the Gestamp to do it, but you get tied down with all these little bureaucracy and procurement rules and we weren't allowed to do it. So we have to sell our cheaper electric to the National Grid, who then can make a nice little profit and sell it on to them. It's only like putting it to there. So, small paragraph, plan for the long term, you get the benefits, but don't ever forget you have to plan for the long term.
councillor Simon Take.
Thank you, chairman, and I completely agree with the comments made by a colleague there, councillor Atkins, on the facility for ashes. And of course, we have a commitment as we move towards net zero for 2050 to reduce to zero the amount of we send to landfill. It'd be remiss of me without talking about one of the problem landfills, one of a few problem landfills in the county, particularly Wally's Quarry. And of course, last week, the Environment Agency announced that there had been a problem with how the data relating to hydrogen sulfide monitoring stations had been calibrated, and this was a national issue. So, meaning the data reported cannot be relied upon as accurate and is likely to have a significant under-recording of the levels of data relating to hydrogen sulfide actually in the community. Now, this error, Mr Chairman, dates back to when units were first installed in 2017/18, particularly at Wally's Quarry. As we know, the Environment Agency is responsible for the regulation of landfills such as Wally's Quarry, and the news is extremely disappointing and concerning to local residents, to myself as a local councillor, that the Wally's Quarry landfill is in my division. I think this is an absolute failure from the Environment Agency. They've let our communities down badly for a long period, and this is just adding insult to injury. And people have wanted support from the Environment Agency and information and reassurance, and that information has not been and that reassurance is not there. I'd like to thank the leader of the council for joining me and writing to the Secretary of State, calling for a full inquiry, and we think that should be a public inquiry because this is a long line of things that the EA have not got right over Wally's Quarry. And we believe it requires an independent public inquiry into this. And also, obviously, the implications for health for local residents. I'd like to thank councillor Pert, who's Chair of the House Scrutiny, who is going to host a scrutiny meeting up in Newcastle, this will be the second one the committee has held there, to look into those health implications and to question health professionals and also hear from local members in Newcastle. I think that's a really good move and thank him for that. I mean, this has come as a body blow for local residents affected by these noxious odours over a long period. Local residents are rightly demanding answers from both the Environment Agency and the Health Agency. I will continue, and I know this council will, I know the Borough Council will, I know that councillor Huckfield will, who's had to leave this meeting and was sure would have had something to say today, continue to press the EA for them to do their job relating to Wally's Quarry. And there has been an improvement over the last few months in the odours, we must make sure that that continues and that the EA are open and transparent with us on this issue for the good of the people of Newcastle underlying. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 15 of the leading statement, which is call to get your Covid and flu jabs this autumn. councillor Johnny McMann.
Thank you, chairman, and my apologies for being late, I was getting my Covid vaccine. I was delighted at the fact that where I got it in Norton Keynes was quite busy and people were going through. But I'm on my feet at the moment to request that you ask people if they are approached about getting the Covid vaccine to take it seriously. The WHO, I think it was in the summer of last year, deemed that the pandemic had ended, but it's still endemic. It remains in our community and it can still do considerably harm to vulnerable individuals. It can be very, very difficult for people if they get Covid. And in some cases, it still remains tragic. There was a piece of work, I am told, that was done in the United States, looking at US veterans, and long Covid has more of a burden in that community than cancer and cardiovascular disease combined. Now, clearly, we can't extrapolate to our community or to communities as a whole because that was a select group, but it does tell you the effect that it can have. So, please, if you can, at every opportunity, advise people if they are approached, and they'll be approached to the level of a particular age, or if they're considered vulnerable, to get both the flu and the Covid vaccines. And you can get them both simultaneously. That's it. Thank you, chair.
Thank you councillor McMann. councillor Jeremy Oates.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just wanted to comment on this, and what we learnt during the pandemic, or lots of us learnt, was the value of the pharmacy. So whilst everyone desperately calls their GP at 8.30 in the morning and can't get through, pharmacies are delivering a massive amount of healthcare. Now, the reason I raise this is I recently had my flu vaccination at Planters Garden Centre. And for those that don't know Planters Garden Centre, it's just outside Tamworth, over the border in the dark side of North Warwickshire. The pharmacy that did that have a mobile vaccination clinic, which they're happy to travel anywhere where there's demand. On top of that, they also provide vaccination facilities in Faisley, which is Alan White's patch, on the Albert Road in Tamworth, which borders Rob Pritchard's patch and my patch, and in Dostal, which is in Alex Farrell's patch. What they are looking for now is information as to where to target their mobile vaccination clinic. And the reason I raise this now is I had a conversation with Alan White way before the pandemic, and we were talking about determinants of health, and we were talking about dare to share. And what we were talking about was dare to share data, not about individuals, but about issues in areas. And we did that fantastically well during the pandemic, we had all tiers of local government and the health service talking to each other. So what I'm asking for now, Mr Chairman, is a commitment to share information better with our pharmacies, particularly those that have got mobile vaccination clinics, so we can put them in the areas where we need to target people and release, yeah, reduce the burden on the GPs and waiting for those referrals. My father will not go anywhere without going for his GP first, and he's the one that's stopping me getting an appointment. So if we can divert people into pharmacies, it would be fantastically useful. The mobile clinic really requires 20 people a day to make it viable to travel into the area. That's all it is. And people will be pleased to know, I've read a list out there of whether that pharmacy is delivering services, and I don't want Tina Clements to feel left out. So in her division, I'm currently arranging for the mobile vaccination clinic to visit the best night spot in Belgrave, and that is Belgrave Sports and Social Club, and deliver vaccines on their car park, which is in Tina Clements's patch. So if I could ask that we dare to share info, get down Belgrave Club, get your flu vaccine. Thank you.
councillor Sean Atkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Pharmacies are certainly doing a great job in terms of delivering Covid jabs. I indeed had mine done at a local pharmacy. But one of the issues is the NHS system directs people to quite a long way away. For instance, I had a complaint from someone in Cheddon who had been told to go to Milton. Now, that's very difficult to get to by public transport. So I think there's an information deficit here in that people who maybe don't travel around very much are not aware that pharmacies are doing a walk-in vaccination service. So I would hope that the NHS system, when people book for a Covid jab, don't automatically send them to a remote facility which is difficult to get to. And it's sometimes not helped by GPs, who, for instance, I've had a response, and I don't know, councillor Dever may be able to help me with this, saying that although she lives very near the JCB site that has in the past been a fantastic site for vaccinations, she was unable to be referred to JCB. So I think there is a problem about routing people to the nearest place because, as councillor McMann knows, you know, people won't travel for health prevention measures. It needs to be local and accessible, easy to get to, and then we hopefully will get a higher take-up of both flu and Covid jabs. Thank you.
councillor Graham Hutton.
Thank you. There are other things you can get at the moment from your GP, which is shingles. And I'd like to add to councillor McMann's point that, and the older you get, the worse shingles is. And my GP is recommending that everybody over the age of 60 gets a shingles vaccination around about the same time they get their flu and Covid vaccinations. It's quite important. You do not want to get shingles after the age of 60. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Sahid Asain.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Very quickly, we must not forget this invisible enemy, what we all fight with. I completely echo with Dr Johnny McMann. At the same time, Mr Chairman, we must not also forget those social media and Facebook, all these rumours that are floating and refraining people not to take these things, all these conspiracy theories and everything. We must be mindful on this and I hope better days will come ahead and they will stop what they're doing. So in that occasion, I concur and ask everyone to take this opportunity and protect yourself. We have to protect ourselves. Thank you.
councillor Paul Northgate.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you councillors for your input this morning. Unfortunately, we don't have the full pictures regards the present Covid state, as reliable data isn't available to us, as it's testing so sporadic and we're getting the information directly from routine and recorded information provided by hospitals. I thank councillor McMann for his comments and also councillor Oates for his mobile service. I think that's very, very, very important. But we need to get this message out and we need to get this message out clearly. In terms of Covid rates, we don't have that reliable data, but what we can share with you is a weekly snapshot of where we are in terms of mortality rates in Staffordshire. And at present, that lies at 151, and out of those mortality rates, seven of those are attributed to Covid-19. So this is a very serious issue. We need to make sure that we are targeting the vulnerable in our communities and to this extent, our commissioners and staff here are working very hard with the ICB and the MPFT to target valuable, sorry, vulnerable groups. Because we've learnt from the previous boosters, et cetera, where these people are, we know that where they are now, and we're making direct approaches to these. And we're also making inroads in terms of the improvement plan to tackle those barriers that overcome vaccine hesitancy and to improve actual access to all vaccinations. To date, Mr Chairman, we've delivered 27,906 vaccinations so far this year. In terms of scale and context, that's a minute proportion of when things are at the highest levels with Covid. So we need to do much, much more to target those people out there. And that's where the councillors can have that great role in making sure that we're urging communities to pass on the information that we have, because we haven't got that national campaign anymore, but we still have to live with Covid. This isn't going to go away, and we've seen the local variants that's emerged now as a very stark reminder of the powerful effects that this can have, particularly those that are suffering with health conditions, et cetera. And I put myself in that class, because I received both my flu vaccination and Covid last week. At a chemist in Newcastle, I take on board councillor Atkins, your comments about the access system, and I will take your comments back because I agree with you, it isn't ideal. Having gone through the process myself, I had to sort of go through a list of places via the NHS booking system to get the appropriate access. This isn't ideal for everybody and I will certainly take that back. councillor Hutton, your very valuable point about shingles is an ever-present reminder that there are other vaccinations that we need to take on board, and this is where we've strengthened that bond with the ICB and the NHSE, to make sure that even with shingles and MMR for vaccinations for young people, that those programmes are in place to protect that vulnerable section of society. In terms of flu, our area is one of the top performing areas of the uptake, 72,000 vaccines have been administered so far. This is higher than the regional and Midlands rate, which is excellent news across all ranges, including all areas of ethnicity. Even though we get good uptake, Mr Chairman, we need to strive to improve those hard-to-reach areas and that's where we're doing our valuable work to do that. And I can assure all here present that that's what we're doing, we're learning from those lessons and taking that forward. So, Mr Chairman, I'll end with that. We urge everybody to take on board the vaccination advice, and where you hear of people deliberating on that, offer your assistance and urge them to push forward and take it, because that's the valuable thing that we can protect our residents in this community. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to the final item on the leading statements, which is item 16, give a child councillor Sahid Asain.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. There are no unwanted child but unfound families. I admire that tenacity and courage to raise a child, and I would like to pass our sincere gratitude to all those foster carers in our county as well. And, Mr Chairman, I always say to my three children, you are the most amazing things that happen to my life. Mr Chairman, on this note, I would urge council to encourage everybody who are involved in the childcare to not allow that iPhone or iPad to steal their childhood. Thank you.
councillor Anne Edgela.
Thank you very much, chairman. Yeah, I mean, being a former foster parent myself and knowing that some of our children out there are going through a very, very difficult time, and you wouldn't believe some of the heartache that they suffer, it's unbelievable. And if I employ everybody in this chamber to ask friends or family to, if they can help and just foster a child, be it long term or short term, please, please, just show these children that you care, that you really do believe in their future and just trying to help them. It is so important, I'm so passionate about it, I can't tell you. I know my situation ended in tragedy, but I do believe that so many children out there just need that love and care that we can give them. So please, please, if you can employ your friends or family, just to take on board one child, be it for a few weeks or years, please, please do it, because these children need our help. And thank you. And just to say thank you to all the foster parents as well, they do a brilliant job. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Edgela, and I totally endorse your viewpoint. councillor Moxon.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I won't repeat too much of what's just been said by Anne. We have over 400 families that foster in Staffordshire, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of them. But we do need, we do need more. Too many children that do come into care, who should be with foster carers, end up in residential care where their outcomes are not as good as being in a family unit. So I would encourage you all, that when you do speak to people you know, friends, family constituents, to encourage people to take up the opportunity and make inquiries about fostering for a Staffordshire child.
Thank you councillor Sutton. That concludes That concludes the leading statements. I move that the report be received, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Wonderful. We now move on to item seven of today's agenda. Item seven is in three parts, A, B and C, and they are recommendations to the council. So A is a proposed addition to the scheme of delegation in relation to handling of the S 53 applications under the Wildlife and Countryside Act. councillor Worthington, will you move for the consideration, please?
I've been asked to make a slight amendment to seven A. It was on the lighter comments made by councillor Smith at the political group meeting, and we're going to add a little bit to, subject to approval by the members, that the exercising of delegated authority by the deputy chief executive and director for corporate services be reported to the next available meeting of the countryside rights and way panel. If we can add that to the recommendation, it would be much appreciated, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Worthington and councillor Worthington. And he's next. And we did check with the monitoring officer, and we can move on with that. See if councillor Worthington will second that, please.
Please, Mr Chairman, make a short, short, few words. For those who don't know what the Crow Panel do, countryside rights of way, there's a definitive map of footpaths across Staffordshire, and there's a backlog of quite a considerable number of years of people who've requested that we add footpaths or take footpaths away from the definitive right of way. So it's one of those panels that works in the background, and thank you to all the members and officers who make that possible. Could I just, it is important that we get this right, because it's a semi-legal panel, and just quickly read out this one short paragraph, and it's to do with what the jobs are, and it's page 35, 10 E, to prioritise the, and the members are asked to approve the inclusion of the new delegation, and that is, E, to prioritise the making of definitive modification orders in circumstances where, A, an application has been subject of court proceedings which has required the council to obtain such a level of legal expertise and advice that any potential delay in making an order might result over time in the loss of that knowledge, or B, that routes may be affected by major projects such as H S two. I think we've already found out that H S two is slightly outdated, but it does make a lot of difference to the, to the order. It is, sorry to go to legalities, but that's where we are. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor David Smith.
Chairman, can I reinforce what councillor has said? The Crow Panel is one of the most important panels that this council has. It is making legal decisions that have massive financial risk if we don't get them right. And so I'd really implore anyone who sits on the panel or is about to be appointed to the panel, that to have a meeting which is only quartet, and quartet is two people. I chaired the panel a couple of weeks ago, with one person in attendance, making legal decisions binding this council. I don't think that's good enough, Chairman. I would also just reinforce the recommendation that the items which are dealt with by officers are reported in the same way that planning applications dealt with by officers are reported to the committee, that that is reported to the first available Crow Panel meeting. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Smith. I have no further speakers on this item. It has been moved and seconded, that the recommendation contained in the report be approved, is that agreed? Moving on to item B of item seven on the agenda, which is potential appointment of independent members to the Audit and Standards Committee, stroke, review of the Audit and Standards Committee, terms of reference. councillor Worthington, will you move the consideration of the report, please?
Yes, Mr Chairman, happy to move the report. I have to say, when I first read this, I didn't quite really, I don't quite see the point of having an independent member, that's non-voting. I was a bit surprised, I thought the fact that we're going to appoint somebody, there would be equal partnership, really, but, so I'm a little bit not surprised about that.
You are moving the report as it stands, councillor Worthington.
Sadly, I don't know if any other member would like to speak on that. I think Graham would like to add some words on that, if you can let Graham speak.
It hasn't been seconded yet, councillor Worthington.
I'm seconding it.
Oh, second it as you see fit, councillor Trowbridge.
I was happy to second it as it was, so I'll reserve the right to speak for a few minutes, if that's okay.
Thank you for that. councillor Graham Hutton.
This is about a potential appointment. All it's doing is, if the audit committee decide that they want an external person, that this mechanism allows us to have an external person. At the moment, no vote, and I'm happy to support this, as long as it's potential. We do not want somebody imposed upon us by officers. So I'll be putting myself forward for any panel that chooses any external member if we decide that we want one. So all this is, is putting in a mechanism, it's not saying that we're having somebody imposed upon audit. And I think that's quite important. So all this is a change in mechanism. Thank you very much.
councillor Alan White.
Thank you, councillor Hutton, for your useful intervention. It was debated at the Audit and Standards on the 19th of September, and I so move, this isn't the forum for debate on this matter, it was debated at the Audit and Standards, so I move the recommendation, Mr Chairman. Well, move the motion be put, should I say, get it right.
As it has been done, councillor White. councillor Trowbridge, do you wish to speak? But you reserved your right to speak.
Going with the original, I'm absolutely okay with that.
Thank you. I pressed it on and then pressed it off, my apologies. Just to be clear, are you happy to recommend it as you are, councillor Worthington?
Do I have a say on, because he wasn't at the meeting, so.
Okay, so we're happy to recommend this as it was.
Happy to remove the recommendation, yes.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded, the recommendation contained in the report be approved, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Item C, the electoral review of Staffordshire County Council draft recommendations. councillor Alan White, will you move the consideration of the report, please?
I'm up and ready and poised like a coil spring, Mr Chairman, to move the recommendation of the electoral review of Staffordshire County Council draft recommendations.
councillor White, will you second, please? Philip White.
Prepared a short speech on this, which I will not read out, I second the motion.
Agreed. I have no speakers, so, and do you want to do your short speech? Wonderful. It has been moved and seconded, the recommendation contained in the report be approved, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Moving on to item eight of our agenda today. Members, the five questions, which is the questions on a standing order eight, members, the five questions and answers are being circulated to members and published on our website. In accordance with the usual procedure, the questions and answers will be taken as read. I will allow each question of five minutes where you should ask a supplementary question and to receive an answer. And as I say, in my third meeting at every time, no debate is allowed, and I would ask members to genuinely strict to that. Questions in order, councillor Yates to councillor David Williams.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and I'd like to thank councillor Williams for a very comprehensive answer, which contains a lot of very useful information, and we have a number of residence groups who, this is a pertinent subject on, so they'll be very happy with some of the comments there, and it gives us a way forward. I would like to ask a supplementary question, if I may, and I will keep it very much to the point. We currently have a situation where parents are following the school bus in their cars, adding to congestion and pollution around our schools, because they're slightly outside of the free bus catchment area, and are unable to pay for vacant seats, and therefore not making a financial contribution to the cost of the service. What work has the council undertaken to resolve this frustrating issue, and in the short term, will the council permit paying schoolchildren to use these buses where the service provider can supply and use a disability compliant bus?
Is this a question for you, councillor Williams?
So Yates, this has already been processed and evaluated previously in the council and is subject to government legislation, to what can and can't happen. If he wants to write me with a question for that properly, I'll make sure he gets a full response.
Right order, councillor Bardaisy to councillor David Williams.
Thank you, Chair. My supplementary is, Chair, why questions and seeking further information didn't happen sooner? The debate and speculation as to whether the line of H S two will or will not happen towards the north has been going on for some considerable time. So where was the Plan B, or the strategic thinking, or the forward planning as to what should we be doing just in case that line doesn't go ahead? Thank you, Chair.
councillor Williams.
It's just about.
Thank you, Chairman, and I'm really glad that councillor Bardaisy thinks that I'm the Prime Minister, and that she actually should be forwarded to, I'm sorry, that's who you need to send it to, this is the county council, not the government.
councillor Charlotte Atkins to councillor David Williams.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm really surprised that this response does not include the exciting project, which Gillian will know all about, about the Leake to Stoke railway line, unless, of course, it's been dropped, I hope it hasn't, because the feasibility study for this particular line speaks about something like 700,000 journeys being carried out on this particular line by 2030. That's a remarkable figure, but my concern is that we can be sure that this will be fully funded by the government, and that there is connectivity with buses, because there's no point in having a Leake to Stoke line if we want to get people into the Peak District if there's no connectivity with buses. So I hope that when the county council does get more involved with the D F T, that those sort of issues around the Leake to Stoke railway line will be taken up and fully addressed. Thank you.
councillor Williams.
I think I'd like to thank councillor Atkins for a question, but I don't think I actually heard one, really. Just to make members aware that we work alongside with the D F T, we're working with the local transport plan, which we're putting together now. We've constantly worked with H S two to try to reduce the issues, and where it comes with anything with this, we work with D F T and local government and government as much as possible, so thank you.
councillor Asain to councillor David Williams.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm grateful to the cabinet member for the condolences to my constituents and their families who were affected by this tragic accident. Mr Chairman, in the questions is very rightly mentioned individual aspirations and liaising with local communities to understand the need. Mr Chairman, may I urge him, when he got time, to see the bereaved family, to listen their stories, and if there are anything we can find out to improve the situation for the future preventions. Thank you.
Yeah. councillor Williams.
Thank you, Chairman. Obviously, I know from everybody in this council, I'm sure that our sympathies go out to the family, and the details of which will be properly investigated by the police and then the such. Being an ex firefighter and going through incidents such as this, I'm quite aware of what the incident occurs and how it affects families. All I can say is that this will be investigated in the proper fullness of time and reported on, and however, you know, this was happening at different parts of the road, these two incidents, and I think we just need to be looking at why that is happening and seeing what, if anything, we'll be able to put in place.
councillor Asar to councillor Jessel.
Thank you, Chairman. Just like to thank councillor Jessel for the reply, and if you could just feedback with the findings once, sort of, once you've got the findings that have been raised, and likewise, if you need residents, names and contact numbers who've contacted me regarding this issue, I'm happy to share. Thank you.
councillor Jessel.
I thank councillor Asar for that, and happy to work with him, because obviously, this area, particularly the southern part of Burton, abuts my division as well, so yes, more than happy to do that.
Thank you. We now move on to item nine of today's agenda, which is petitions. I've been notified of three petitions to be handed in today, but I also have Nigel Yates.
Yes, thank you, Chair, thank you for indulgence. I am aware that I did hand a petition in last time on behalf of my division's residents, and I was told I'd get an answer by the 16th of August. I've had no response, so could I please request that I can have that response followed up and sent through to me, please?
Thank you, councillor Yates, I will speak to the cabinet member concerned and make sure you get an answer, thank you. councillor Cath Perry.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I've got a petition here from the residents of Shores Lane in Great Whirley for H G Vs, they're being bombarded with H G Vs, so it's a weight restriction they're asking for. It is a very small, narrow road with cottages, et cetera, and for the last 12 months or so, 44 ton lorries have been going down this. I'm assuming lots of other areas suffer with the same problem, but I think we need to look into this, Chairman, so I'd like to present this petition on behalf of the residents of Shores Lane in Great Whirley. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Perry. councillor David Smith.
Chairman, I've got the unusual situation today where I'm presenting to you a petition of 1,500 names, but I have the unusual situation of having a message for this council from the leader of the adjoining council in Walsall, who says, I can confirm my support for junction improvements at Main Street, Gravely Lane and Birch Lane with Chester Road, as I have recently witnessed of fatality and road traffic collisions is required jointly with Walsall Metropolitan Borough Council. So really, Chairman, the petition that I'm presenting to you today is one that affects two councils, not just this one. The Chester Road is a road which is under the direction of Walsall, not this county, but we have a series of junctions that go on to this road, which are extremely dangerous. We've had a number of fatalities, we have weekly accidents at these junctions, and we need to have a joint working group to look at how we're going to understand the problems and how taking side roads on to a main road, we're going to be able to deal with that. Chairman, I have traffic surveys that support this information. I propose that at the earliest possible stage, we would respond to this petition and have joint meetings with Walsall and look at what we can do to make the roads safer. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. As many will know, you and I share the same division, and this is a petition that has come to us from Chancery Drive. come to us from Chancery Drive in Hensford. Now, when Chancery Drive was built, the road was constructed in such a way that they put concrete down and then covered the concrete with tarmac and that was it. As the tarmac has disappeared, it just shows bare concrete. This has resulted in it being very difficult to drive on, particularly when it's icy, bearing in mind that Chancery Drive is on a hill. And it's really frustrating the residents and to put salt into the wound, it's not helped by the fact that Mr Williams is doing such a great job because what they see is so much dressing of roads in their immediate surroundings. So I think they do, I think they do have a case and I'd be grateful if he would give it his utmost attention.
Thank you, councillor McMarm. I now have, I don't have any further petitions as the next members do. Item 10 is exclusion of the public. We have no exclusions of the public, so that ends the meeting. Enjoy your lunch, have a lovely afternoon. Thank you very much.